All right, good evening, and thank you for coming to tonight's council meeting. If you could all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Can I get an adoption of tonight's agenda?
I'd like to close in memory of Irene Hansen, who passed away recently. I believe she was Brisbane's oldest citizen, at 102 years old. She would have been 103 this year, a longtime Brisbane citizen.
Yeah, boy, that is amazing, 102 years old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was quite a spunk.
We could all be so lucky.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that, Clark.
And with that, I move adoption of your agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Oral communications. So this is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to talk to the council about something that's not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something that you want to just get off your chest, come on up to the podium. Okay, oh, all right. And if you could just state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Carol Sillick. I'm a resident, first time attending a council meeting, and I truly don't know if this is on the agenda or not, but you've probably heard it. It's in connection with the letter from the North County Fire Authority, and the letter states that if we disagree with the determination of the department, blah, 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 that we can state our concerns here today, this evening. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Is it on the agenda? So should I come up here?
Under public hearing.
Yeah, so.
Next time.
Next time I'm up?
Yeah.
In the front.
And then I'll ask you to come on up, Carol. All right, moving on to the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have a public hearing. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Well, you don't need a motion, but I think maybe if you want to get a staff.
Good stuff, okay. All right, staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lentz and council members. My name is Richard Johnson, I'm the new fire marshal, taking over from Frank. This evening, we're here to hear any objections to our initial letter of April 9th declaring a property a re-abatement problem. Council could, if they chose to overrule our ruling, but generally speaking, what we do is take a look at the property again and reevaluate it. It's not anything about the property being manatorily cleaned at this point, that's in the future, and it's definitely not about putting any leans or anything on the properties at this time. Again, that is always way in the future. So at this point in time, we'd like to hear any opposition to it, and we'll address those.
Debbie?
Yes, I have a question, if you don't mind. One of the confusion that exists among people are where the private property is and where the city right of way. And right now, there are a lot of areas that city has the right of way, and there are bushes, there are shrubberies, and so forth, and the property owner gets the notice that your property is not clean. I know of a few people that have had that situation, and they get pretty panicked, and they don't know what's going on, so how do you respond?
If they just call, the department will come out and go over each property individually with them, if there's some confusion about where the property line is.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, do you have any questions? Fire marshal?
I do, if.
Well, I'm concerned about the notification and the lack of time between this certified letter. I personally received one out at the Sierra Point Yacht Club that was for a different property owner.
Right.
And then, I think, I might have gotten one on my home, so the council's not exempt. But again, I haven't gotten the certified letter yet.
Okay.
So I'm just concerned about the notification and the thought that today's the day that you have to appeal any ruling.
Again, it's, the initial letter went out April 9th, okay? The secondary letter, which was certified, which was sent out after the engine companies went out and looked at the properties that had been sent the original letter. The second letter is just a reminder that these are the possibilities that can come about if you do not clean. But tonight's objections are to the original 11th, or April 9th letter stating that your property is, so if we sent you a letter to your property and it wasn't your property, now would be the night to come and say, "That isn't my property." We would then go out and reevaluate it. It's not, this isn't to hear the secondary letter that went out, this is to hear issues over the April 9th letter that went out, so it's in April, not June.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add something? Fire chief. What we'd be happy to do is go ahead and extend this another two weeks. As Chief Johnson was mentioning, this is really for people to come and say, "I shouldn't be part of the program at all. I'm a, you know, I'm a green piece of lawn." And we realize that the way the dates are set up, that we probably should extend this another two weeks. And what we'll do in the future is make it council-specific, not date-specific, because it tends to be too short of a timeframe. So in the future, what we'll do is we'll have something down that says essentially, "The second council meeting in June will be the appeal process," and then have that link up when we send out information. That way, people will have enough time if they do want to come in and talk about whether or not they should be a part of the program.
Yeah, that makes sense. That what you were hoping for, Terry? Something like that, that cut process?
I think, I just think that it would be good, because it's very unclear as to what this letter intended to do, I believe.
Yeah, you know, and I think what Chief had said, it'll provide consistency moving forward.
One of the other moving targets for us is the weather, and so we try and start in April notifying people to start thinking about clearing their vegetation, and then it'll either get hot sooner or later, and we spend a lot of time not doing enforcement, but working with people, because we really don't want to do the enforcement. So even after the two weeks, next week, when we come back to the council, we'll still continue to work with property owners. Our goal is to not go all the way to the enforcement action, as long as people are working with us, we'll work all the way through July, but it's really important to get the dry vegetation out of the way as soon as we can, but our goal is not to do the enforcement, the penalizing and cleaning, because it just costs more money than it should. So we'll continue to work with people as opposed to doing the enforcement.
And at the same time, we know there are people that are going to wait exactly in the July deadline that you have established. We do have some people that do that. Am I right in my neighborhood? So.
Clark?
It exists.
Yeah, no, I was concerned about the timeframe also, and I think that's appropriate to deal with it in two weeks. At the same time, it's still, since we do have a public hearing scheduled and have somebody here, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to listen to them and hear what they have to say. Just curious, Chief Johnson, how many folks do we have on a list that we sent certified letters out to?
I don't have that number with me tonight, no.
I think in the past, we provided that, and I'm not sure at what point, so that's also helpful, too. I mean, it kind of gives us an idea of what you guys are looking at.
Right. And as was mentioned, a lot of people do wait for the, right at the end, to get it. It is concerning, if you cut it too early, it'll grow again, you'd have to do it again.
Done it twice.
And we realize that and try to.
And again, we had a fire the other day, so, and it was somewhat of a dry season this year, except for today.
Except for rain today, yes.
Yeah. Some weird weather.
Yeah, actually, I had a, I'm sorry, actually, I had a neighbor that before Sunday's fire was saying, "Why are you guys bothering us? This is good, you know, it's my property, I, this, this, this." When the fire happened, he said, "Now I know what you guys are doing."
There you go.
Right.
Ray?
Yeah. Some people have to see it to believe it.
Yeah.
Again and again.
That was even the case when there was the big fire, you know, the one that started from the controlled burn, I'm sure you remember that?
Yes.
And there were people in the park who didn't want to, you know, leave their warehouses, even though the fire was bearing down on them, and you had to take them out almost by the scruff of their collar and say, "Look, there's a fire there," before they would even move, so.
Devil arroyo.
Yeah, exactly. So people can be strange in their own, even in their own interest. The thing that I wanted to do was to reinforce what Clark just said. I think it would be useful for the council, when we have the public hearing, that we have the list of the properties which have received the notices.
Sure, I will bring that, I have that.
I think that would be very helpful information, and then it becomes public information, and everybody sees it, and so I think it's a good thing to do.
We'll provide that next time.
Okay. Chief Johnson, if someone waits all the way to the end, and you guys have to go out and do the work, there's the bill that is sent to the property owner, how is that bill received? I've been told it's part of their property taxes?
I believe, and Stuart can confirm this, it would be attached to their property taxes.
So they would see, they would see the bill during their next property tax?
Correct.
No, you would see it. There's really two lists we're talking about. One is the list of people who, after the fire department looks at it, decides that their weeds need to be cut, and the idea is that they'll get in there and do it themselves, and then the fire department will work with them to try to get that done. Whether you want that list to come before you, I don't know, this is kind of later on in the process. This hearing today is for people who have already received mailings from the department, have not cut the weeds themselves, and this is to basically tell them, if they don't do it, the city's going to go in and do it for them, and they'll be charged with the cost. So the end result would be the city council issuing an order to the fire department to conduct the abatement proceeding. After that's all done, then the costs are brought back to us, and we bring the matter back to the city council for you then to levy a lien on the property, in the same way as you would levy an assessment. So that's the point at which it would become part of the property tax bill, but at that stage, the owner's been notified of the need, the owner hasn't cleared it up, the city, through its contractors, had to do the abatement work, and all we're trying to do is, at that point, is recover our costs, our out-of-pocket costs. And to levy that assessment needs further council action, so you would, you would see that, and that list would be a public record. Whether you want the first list to be a public record, we could certainly do that, but I'd have to say the people on that list are kind of less culpable, in the sense that that may be their first contact with the department, that there's a need to do something, but, you know, that's up to the council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add also, we do, it's about 2,000 notices that go out with all the different parcels, some that have buildings on them, some that don't. It ends up being about 250 that we work with, and out of that, we have a very small, tiny number of people that just don't comply. And so, it does work, and people in Brisbane are very compliant, from what we've found. It ends up being just a handful that are probably absentee property owners, more than people that live here, but it is a small number.
And coincidentally, I exchanged some emails with Detsy just as recently as today about some earlier abatement costs, and going back three years now, we have a total of maybe 14 that we're looking at, so it is a very small number.
So I really think the council should only look at the later list rather than the initial list.
Right, agreed.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for fire chief? Okay.
No.
All right, so it is public hearing?
Well, I, I thought I'd just, I don't know if you council members have seen the letter that was sent certified mail. This is, it was dated May 23rd, and it was sent out, cost $5.75, signed receipt requested. It was posted May 31st, and it came to us on, postman delivered it, June 1st. So as you said, the notice time was very, very small. This happens to be a rental house. I live on Sierra Point. This was a house at 485 San Bruno. So my tenants, I gave them a copy, and, you know, they got upset as well, and they called the number where you could call Clyde Preston, Safety Inspector, and she called today and was told that the inspection, the survey had been done May 14th, and my tenants admittedly told me they had some weeds, which they cleaned up subsequent to May 14th. So, well, you know, slightly over a month has gone by, so I'm just setting out what the timeframe is. And I went and, I went and I observed and inspected the premises. It was very clean, and I didn't know if it'd be appropriate to take visual pictures of the yard and bring it in, or what I should do.
Chief, yeah, if you could respond to that, I mean, you know, once.
That's a perfect example of, we're going to always cross in the mail when people actually do the work. So just contact us, if it's been cleaned up, we'll make sure that you get no more notices and you're off the list.
Well, how do I draw to your attention the actual location of the property? Or do you just inspect all the properties?
Yeah, you know, what happens is that this program is done where we just have to go out and drive up and down streets, and then send out to the different parcels. And that's why people sometimes may get one that doesn't apply to them, and they simply call us, we come out, meet with them, and take you off the list, because there are going to be some that get them that don't need to have a notice. If yours has been cleaned up and you just need to be checked off the list, call the business number there, and we'll send somebody out to meet with you, and actually go where we need to go, and see what you're seeing, and we'll take you off the list.
What about this, chief? You know, on the back side, it says if you disagree with the determination, and so then you can, you know, you can be, you can come to this meeting, what about if, you know, if you have already dealt with the situation, you know, then you could just ignore the notice, or you can send an email?
Yeah, I mean, either way, because when we come back to look at the same property again, if it's all cleaned up, that's, you won't hear from us again. And, you know, as you say, a lot of properties will either be trying to clean it up, not clean it up, or have gotten it clean, as we're going by trying to follow back up on them. And it's, you know, this program is very labor-intensive, and doesn't have a lot of dollars to support it, and we do the best we can do in terms of trying to make the community safe, reducing the vegetation. It's by no means perfect, that's why there's only 14 over three years. We work with people for a very long time in trying to make sure that we don't have to do anything that would be, you know, bad for the property owner. We'll work with you, just get ahold of us, we'll come out, take a look at it, get you off the list, and you won't hear from us again.
Yeah, you know, chief, what I, what I, what would be nice, and also trying to not have it be something that takes a lot of time on your end, is, and to alleviate any kind of anxiety that a property owner would have. You know, they do the work, and then they, and say they get a notice, and they feel like, "Oh, didn't I do enough?" Or, you know, there's, there's that anxiety, and so if, say there was an email, you know, an email address, that they could just say, "Hey, I did the job." Now they have a paper trail that they did notify the fire department, and so, now that's been established, and so if it came back, at least they could refer to that email and.
Well, you know, we prefer not the email, we prefer the phone call, and if you call us, we go out and we meet. The email gets sort of lost in translation, too. That's not a perfect one for us. For us, it's better just make the phone call, we'll either send an engine company to come meet you at your property and take you off the list, or one of our fire inspectors will come out. That's the better way for us to do it. Then it's done, it's clean, and they've had contact with us, and we've looked at the same thing they're looking at. We don't have a lot of them, and so it's not tough for us to do this, so we'd be happy to just come out and look at your property or anybody else's, and just take it off the list.
And like Councilman Richardson brought up, sometimes there's, you know, the property line, there is a border, like right on the sidewalk, and that, the tenant was saying, "Well, doesn't this, isn't the city supposed to take care of that?"
Yes.
"I don't know." Because I say, when I gave him a copy of this, he got ballistic, and I said, "You know, just take about 20 breaths, and calm down, and we'll figure it out."
Yeah, it's, like I say, it is not a perfect science. We're just trying to reduce the vegetation out there, and in that particular case, if we came out and they were concerned about that piece, we'd say, "Not your problem, yours is cleaned up, you're off the list."
So then we use this number on the front again, that contacts Clyde.
Yeah, and you can call our Fire Prevention Services Bureau. It doesn't have to be the inspector, just call the business number, and they'll get you, maybe send another inspector out, just to do it, or an engine company. So just call that number, give us your address, if you need us to come meet with you, we'll set up a time to come and take a look at it with you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Well, the good thing about this system that is not working, brought you to the council meeting for the first time, and we get to meet you, so there's something good in this.
That's right, because I've had Councilmember Conway in front of me years ago when I worked for the state.
1997.
That's right. Now it's about time I came around on the other side. Thank you very much.
And Carol, you were very helpful. This had to do with the industrial wage thing that the governor was imposing with the Wage Board back in 1997, so Carol worked for the state and gave me some good guidance, at which time I immediately took off to Los Angeles to testify, so.
Oh, good for you. All right, council discussion.
So, let's see, do we want to move the public hearing to two weeks from tonight?
To continue it until?
Continue it until two weeks from tonight, June 18th? Right?
June 18th.
Okay, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, chiefs.
All right, next on the agenda, new business. Consider approval of the annual rate increase for solid waste services provided from South San Francisco Scavenger Company, effective July 2nd, 2012. Maria, you're doing the presentation?
Evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. You have before you a staff report regarding the proposed annual rate increase from South San Francisco Scavenger Company, our solid waste collection provider. Just want to make a couple notes. I know we have a busy agenda today, so I want to try and go over the highlights of it. Basically, we've had scavengers working with us under a franchise agreement we granted them back in March 1st, 1999. This agreement will end on February 28th, 2014, with an option to extend it for a 10-year period by notifying them no later than July 31st, 2013. Some of the things that they provide for us, other than, besides collecting solid waste, is also assist us in other services such as providing the annual citywide yard waste cleanup for us. They also do a lot of the required reporting to CalRecycle that we're required to do on an annual basis. And they're also currently helping us implement a new mandate, which is AB 341, which is the mandatory commercial recycling law that affects a few companies and some apartments over in Brisbane. In terms of their services to us, one of the things that they're all, that the city is required to do is to have a diversion rate of 50% of discarded material per AB 939. Just to let you know where we're at on that, in 2009, scavengers' services allowed us to reach a diversion rate of 72%. In 2010, our diversion rate increased to 79%, which is very good. There are two ways usually that rate increases happen for the garbage collection. One is that we take a look at the CPI index, and based on CPI index, we do an increase that's equivalent to about 80% of the change in the CPI. The section, second option in the agreement is that we take a look at a survey of a basket of cities, of 32 Bay Area cities, and based on the results of that survey, the rates are set at 90.25% of the average of the rates in those cities. This is a year that we take a look at the basket of rates. Once we receive the survey, staff met with the subcommittee to go over the survey and review it. There was a couple concerns, but they've been addressed in terms of the information that came out of the survey. We also asked scavengers if they could take a look at the proposed increase and see if there was a way to kind of balance it out between the rates for the residential and the rates for the commercial, which they did come back to offer to us. So what we're looking at for, effective for July 1st, is taking a look at an increase between the residential can and commercial can rate of 8.92%. As you see on the rates also, for a two-yard bin, we're looking at a 6.71% increase, debris boxes at 8.62% and compacted yard increase at 3.83%. Basically, for standard residential, what that increase, what that equates to is about $1.22 per month, or an additional $14.64 per year for the solid waste removal services. And with that, we do have representatives from South San Francisco Scavenger available here, if you'd like to ask them any questions about the survey or the rates, or as well as any of the other services that provide, that they provide. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions for Maria?
Subcommittee is Ray and myself, so.
Okay, yeah.
You might want to mention how long this contract runs, and that this is under the current contract?
Right, the contract does run until, as I mentioned earlier, February 28th of 2014. This will, this rate will actually go, is only for one fiscal year, to June 30th of 2013.
So this is an increase of 10%, of 8.92% on the residential, just over the last year?
Correct.
And if it were just by CPI, it would be not nearly as much, but because we're looking at other cities?
Correct. The way our franchise agreement is written, every third year, we, instead of looking at the CPI, we take a look at the market cities. And that's, and that's historically how we've been, how we've done the increase over every third year. In other years, we have had double-digit increases based on that survey, and scavengers worked with us previously to kind of mitigate that increase by spreading it out over a couple years. Because of the term that we have left on this agreement, we decided that it was in our best interest to just do it in the one year.
Okay, and when we look at the basket of other cities, are we looking at just their actual pickup for, for the commercial, the pickup rates, or are we looking at the overall benefits that that community's getting?
They're kind, you know, it's a little bit hard to say, perhaps Paul wants to bring up a little bit more description on how the survey's done. He can probably better explain it.
Sometimes it's not always apples with apples to apples.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, it's, it is.
It is probably.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. My name's Paul Formosa. I'm the treasurer for the South San Francisco Scavenger Company. I'm the treasurer for the South San Francisco Scavenger Company, so we're glad to answer any questions. As to how the survey works, the idea was to keep the process as simple as possible and to test the market, if you will, every three years. And so what we do is we go out, we survey those cities for those pickup rates for the five rates. And then we take an average of that, of those 32 cities, and Brisbane is guaranteed 10% less than the average. So we use a 90, it's 90.25%, I believe, is the percentage that's applied to that average. So it's always 10% less than the average for those rates, if that makes sense.
And then the rates that you're showing on this, and I'm not sure if it's a question for you or for staff, is this, how are the communities at the ridge serviced under these rates? Are they in a different?
Altamar at the ridge?
There's three.
The Altamar?
Yes.
Development?
Yes.
Or the houses up on top of the ridge? Well, anyway, Altamar at the ridge is serviced on the commercial rates because it's a multifamily type of a setup. And their rate is the half-yard rate that's on the second page, I believe, under the commercial rates, under the bin rates. And they, because they have elected to use those 96-gallon toters, that's the rate that applies to them. As opposed, and to other multifamily customers as well, they use the same can size.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, if I may. Paul, great to see you and all of you. Thank you very much for the work you do to keep our city clean and also the recycling aspect of that. There are a lot of people that do extremely conscientious work to make sure they conserve and don't generate a lot of waste and so forth. And I know you do a great job in recycling and you've had a lot, you won an award from other resources. In what way the Brisbane people who conserve benefit from their efforts?
One way they can benefit is by lowering their can size. And the rates for a 20-gallon can, most people use a 32-gallon can. The 20-gallon can is, is 20/30 seconds of the rate for the 32-gallon, so it's quite a bit lower. And they get the same services as everybody else. So the 20-gallon rate is pretty low. And I think that the new.
Yeah, it's about $23.90.
No, it's 15.08.
I don't have it off the top of my head. 14.
1464.
94? The new rate would be 1494.
1494. 15 bucks.
Yeah, 15. As opposed to the 2390. And so by increasing their recycling into their, like for paper products, cardboard, which people still have a lot of, even though it's the digital age and those things are decreasing.
Right.
And if they can get their waste down to the 20-gallon can, well, then that's a very attractive rate.
Right.
And in fact, in a lot of cities, that rate is, is very achievable, achievable these days. Seen a big increase, actually, in people using the 20-gallon rate.
Yeah, one trip to Costco totally wipes out your weekly allowance for the paper.
They try Christmas when you get those packages. Because we have a 20-gallon one and we're fine every, every drop-off except during Christmas. And we get these, you know, big old styrofoam things and you just dump it in the can.
Styrofoams.
But you, you make it work over, over time. You put a little chunk in every other week or every week and eventually it goes away. But you're right, it's a big savings. And, and it's, it's really just a matter of attitude. I didn't think that we could do it, and then we just started doing it and it's just, just the way you do it.
We do have a new program that we're working on, that if you have a moment, if you don't mind, I'd.
I was just going to ask you about that to enlighten the rest of the council, because we have a lot of viewers who probably be interested in this, not that we get a whole lot of turnout here at the meetings right now, but you know, it'd be great.
We are currently working with the City of South San Francisco to permit and to cite a, what's called an AD facility, anaerobic digestion. In other words, it's a, it's a form of composting. And the purpose of the program is to give the residents a chance to do food waste composting along with their yard waste. And so basically to describe it, it's a, it's a system, it's German technology, it's been in existence for over 10 years in Europe. So it's proven, it's been out there, hasn't been adopted much in California, but it's all the rage in the industry these days. And the process involves taking the yard waste and the food waste and packing it into something that's similar to the size of like a storage container or a shipping container and leaving it for, there for 21 days. You spray it with bacteria, the normal bacteria that occurs in the background that causes decomposition. And you seal the door and without oxygen, anaerobic, it composts in a 21-day period. During that period, you collect the gases that it gives off, the methane. And we would, we're planning on eight of these pods, so to speak, and that would give us enough to do 40 tons per day, I believe is the number, which would give off enough methane to power about four or five of our trucks every day. And so we'll be scrubbing that gas and then putting it right back into our compressed natural gas vehicles that we use for collection. And so we'll be closing the loop right there on site, so to speak, and lowering our greenhouse emissions through the process and at the same time giving the residential customers an opportunity to do food waste at their houses, at their homes at the curbside.
When do you think that might come on board?
Target date is next summer, between the process of permitting, construction and, and implementation, it's, it's looking at about July next year.
I'm ready to do it now to give you a lot of.
Will we have special cans for that?
Yeah, what we'll have to do is we'll probably give the residents a little bucket to keep under their sinks to accumulate food waste and then put that in with their yard waste. We'll have to increase the yard waste collection to once a week from the two-week period we use now. And then that's all people will have to do, we'll do the rest.
Now, the, the yard waste, you know, currently you're going to take branches that are a certain diameter.
Yes.
Does that still play into what you're trying to do with extracting, really?
Well, it needs a certain amount of fluff to it. It can't be too wet. The food waste, the, the material that you put into the machine has to be a certain amount of dryness to it, so yard waste would be just fine. When it comes out of the machine, it still has to be cured, still has to go to a site where it can be left out in the open and dried, because it won't be dry enough to be actual compost at that point.
Mm-hmm.
And it will be screened, and so the larger things like that would be screened out before it's actually land-spreadable.
And will you have to expand your, your current operation at your facility?
Yes, we will. And we may have to move some of our current storage off-site, we might be looking at another piece of property, but we're working on those details.
Yeah, looking forward to getting more information.
We're already at 79% and we should be, this new program will give us a chance to do even more. 79% is probably the highest rate in the state.
All right, excellent job. Sebby?
Yes, Paul? I'm doing a lid composting under the sink right now, and the lid compost does have a filter, that you're supposed to change that filter. This equipment that you're talking about giving to people, does it have filter or?
I haven't seen the actual ones. The ones I've seen have basically just been a bucket.
Yeah, it's a little metal bucket that has.
I don't know if they have a, the ones I've seen have been basically little plastic buckets, so I'm not really.
Oh, okay, that's plastic.
I haven't seen, we haven't gotten that far yet. We'll be looking at that.
With the composting, in order to get it really composted and so forth, we put worms in it.
Yes.
So.
Worm composting is different, but yeah.
It is different, so you don't give worms to us?
No, no, no. We're not giving anybody any worms. No, the.
I was going to say, we give you the gas, but we want the worm butt.
Give you the worm too.
The worm composting works pretty well for different types of materials.
Yeah, plants.
But that's more of a aerobic, actually, process.
Yes.
This is anaerobic, and so it's, it's more of, it's a sealed container, there shouldn't be any odor issues, anything like that. Should be very neighbor-friendly for our neighbors down there. And, but no, you won't have to do anything except for take your food waste and collect it in the, the bucket is only for convenience, just so that you can bring it to the yard waste container and toss it in.
I wish we could do it right.
Toss the bucket in, toss the waste in. That happens, actually, in different cities.
Yeah, I think that we'll need lid bricks for the, for the yard waste containers, because we got some smart raccoons in Brisbane.
Oh, yes.
Know how to open the lids. They'll have a party.
That's one of the reasons, one of the reasons for going every week. Try and mitigate that somewhat. That's a good point, though, we have very strong and smart crows as well, really good at opening up containers in certain parts of town, but.
And then Paul, you know, part of the, the food waste, so now we're looking at not just green food, we're looking at meat as well, or?
Yeah.
Everything organic.
Everything.
Doug is more the expert, actually, on the actual process, he can answer specific questions.
Yeah, Paul does the numbers, I get to do all the other things.
All the fun stuff.
With that food waste, it's all food, soil, papers, wax cardboard, literally everything except for the plastic that can go in there, meat, vegetables, you name it, all the protein you want to put in there. And you mix it with the yard waste. And the reason being is to put it in a digester to get the best generation of gas, you want like a 60/40 mix. So all we can get from the residents and the businesses will really help it. Restaurant mix is a good thing for it.
All right, and then the compostable plastic, toss it in there too?
Uh, compostable plastics, the biodegradable plastics are all right in there, you know. Actually, even if you get another piece of plastic, it's fine, but it does get screened out, it doesn't get recycled. It won't hurt the process by being in there. The one thing that's absolutely forbidden and we've got to educate people on is no glass, because glassed and compost just hurts everything.
What about dog waste?
That's fine.
The dog waste?
Not human waste, dog waste is fine.
Dog waste is fine. You add a little plastic baggie that's, that's going to break down, toss it in your, your green bin.
Yeah.
Wow, that's.
In the future.
Coming to Brisbane.
Yeah, the, we're in the process of doing a technical addendum to our ERR. It's basically the process that takes, right now, with hall permits and everything there, it would be a 60-day window to construct this thing. But, you know, it takes time to go through the process. And so we're predicting next year, hopefully, early.
Oh, next summer. Okay, not this summer, okay.
Next summer.
July 2013.
Okay.
Yeah, with luck, I mean, we're, we're ready to change over, with the exception of we'd have to deliver something to the houses, but it's having a home for that stuff and that's what we're looking at, so.
Excellent.
Okay.
Also, something we talked about in the subcommittee, you kind of hit on it with the 20-gallon can, that if everybody went to a 20-gallon can, that would create an issue for you guys too, right?
Maybe, maybe. Again, putting this in is, is not going to change our rates, we don't charge them more because we're starting a new service, this is part of the contract thing. Ultimately, if everybody in the city and everywhere went to a 20-gallon can, that may be an issue that some, at some point, some of our costs wouldn't be covered. We haven't come into that, and the way the rates were structured here, it was, it was and is a good idea that it gave people an incentive to recycle, and I still think that's a good idea. Ultimately, if everybody went to a 20 or a 10 or something, well, yeah, we may have to talk about the base structure being a little higher, because we're now providing three services and they take more than $15 to, to cover the cost, if that makes sense.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve the rate increase.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you for coming tonight and giving us an update. Okay, next on the agenda, consider adoption of Resolution Number 2012-09, approving and amended and restated joint powers agreement for the North County Fire Authority. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the staff report pretty much provides the background here. We have an existing agreement that really does not reflect how the JPA actually operates. And essentially, the, the board meets annually and approves an allocation of costs between the three participating agencies. The existing agreement implies the board is involved in operational matters, which it is not and never has been. So not too long ago, I was asked to just update the agreement and decide that the best thing to do would just be to replace the old one altogether with an amended and restated JPA agreement. It was looked at by the JPA Board last week, and I believe they, they had no problem with it and approved it. So the next action is for the agreement to be approved by each of the three cities. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one, two points. On the first page of the amended and restated joint powers agreement, point F, shouldn't that be Brisbane and Pacifica rather than Daly City?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry.
And secondarily, I'm curious, just in terms of the background. I know we started with Pacifica and then, you know, we were fortunate to get the, a department as big as Daly City to become a part of this, and that, that's really helpful. But I'm wondering what the relationship is between the North County, the three cities, and South San Francisco? I'm just sort of curious as to where that stands and what happened in the process and, you know, I'm sure they were asked to join and obviously decided not to, and so I'm just curious as to what the relationship is there.
I think I'd have to defer to Chief Myers on that, because I, I had no conversations with, you know, South San Francisco when this thing was being put together. In fact, most of the work was being done by someone else, so, you know, maybe Chief Myers knows some of the.
Yeah, if you could bring Colma into that as well.
We asked this question.
Actually, they never had an interest in being part of North County Fire Authority when it was constituted in 2001 or 2003. Going back 30, 40 years, there's been discussions of kind of the three North County Departments when they were separate, and South San Francisco and San Bruno talking about complete mergers going back many years ago. And Colma has always been very independent as a volunteer, they're volunteer firefighters there. South San Francisco has also wanted to be independent. There have been periodic discussions throughout the years of how might this work, but nothing definite in terms of their, their interest. That could change. I mean, usually, as positions turn over, people, you know, there's sometimes the right time to make things happen, and that's kind of what has occurred pretty much throughout this whole county. But there's nothing specific. They, they never had an interest in specifically to be in part, they know full well about North County Fire Authority through the managers, city managers, the councils, fire chiefs and so forth, but they've never expressed a complete interest in, you know, coming and being a part of it. Now, that could change going into the future. And we've had conversations throughout the year with, years with other cities, Millbrae, San Bruno, there's been conversations go all the way down to the middle of the peninsula in terms of putting things together, but nothing, nothing concrete ever.
What about the, the automatic aid or mutual aid? That's been in place for quite a while.
Yeah, it's been in place since about 1998, and that was brought about due to paramedic service, putting paramedics on all of the fire companies. And so we essentially act as one county fire department in this, in this county, but we have separate jurisdictions. But for purposes of response for medical, fire, other kinds of specialized, whatever it may be, it's a complete boundary drop, sending the closest, most appropriate resource each and every day.
So I'm, I'm taking it that, that South City and others considered that a. So, I'm taking it that, that South City and others considered that arrangement fully satisfactory from their point of view?
I, I think they, they see him as two different kinds of things going on, you know. In the, in the arrangement that occurred, putting paramedics on fire companies, each fire company, each city that has a fire company is paid $50,000 approximately a year for that service through the JPA arrangement that we have within this county. So, they're kind of two separate kinds of things, but they join us together because of the way we respond. We respond together, fires, everything. So, as I say, we kind of act already kind of like a county fire department, but we don't have the same level, there's not centralized control of, of the department. It's still decentralized through each of the different cities. And, and they're all, you know, you see up and down the peninsula, lots of discussions, configurations of departments coming together and trying to work together, and all based upon, you know, the economy and the lack of revenue and so forth. So, you know, it continues to progress. It's slow, it's difficult, there's a lot of stakeholders and, you know, interests that, that have to be met. And it takes quite a while, but it is definitely something that continues to churn and, and there may be more interest as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. Also, Chief, the, Colma's in a fire district, so their council doesn't really have it in control, right?
That's correct. Colma Fire Protection District encompasses the town of Colma as well as the unincorporated area of Broadmoor. And so, in a district, they have a district board that essentially has the oversight, more of a day-to-day oversight because there is nothing else in place to run the, the fire district. And so, yeah, they collect the money, they handle the money, they, they do all the, the fire department oversight through their board.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just, just, not everybody gets to meet everybody, so perhaps maybe you want to introduce the, your admin and, and the other chiefs. I don't know if the other chiefs have met the full council.
Well, they've been around quite a while, if you take a look at them, so.
Recognizable faces.
No, they all look pretty young to me.
Yeah, the first person I'll introduce is Cole Stratton, he's the deputy fire chief. He's in charge of our operations bureau, so he has all the firefighters, all the fire companies, all the battalion chiefs, most of the battalion chiefs. Handles, you know, the vast majority of the personnel and that within the organization. Next to him is Frank Pinachi, he's our deputy fire chief, and he's in charge of support services and admin. Has a little less staff, but a bigger problem dealing with all the people that have all the stuff to, to use out there. Rich Johnson, he's our deputy chief, and he's in charge of Fire Prevention Services Bureau. In the last month, Frank and Rich switched assignments, so they're both, that's why you saw tonight two different names. We don't have two fire marshals, we just have one, but it was right at the, the transition time. And so, that's our group, and, and that's the executive level of the group. Mary Ann Speediachi here is actually probably the, the one that really keeps us all focused and together. Mary Ann is our executive assistant office manager, business agent within the organization.
We got two Speediachis in the room, then.
Yes, that's right.
Wild times ahead.
Your sister-in-law? Sister-in-law, all right. Great, welcome.
So then, were you ready for a motion?
Yes.
So, that I move we adopt resolution 2012-09, which updates the joint powers agreement for the North County Fire Authority?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, just, I don't know whether it's appropriate or not, but with all of this expertise here, are we going to get a report on the, the most recent event that just happened?
Since I accused them of setting the fire on Saturday, just in preparation for the budget hearing, I'm sure Chief Myers will be willing to.
You know, sometimes timing is really good, especially if it doesn't hurt anybody. Yeah, the fire that occurred over the weekend was caused by, you probably lost some power. There were some transformers that went out, and in doing so, a high-power tension line dropped in the area where the fire started. So, when they got there, and this is a good time of year because we still have some green in the vegetation, although it did burn about 12 acres. But primarily because we couldn't take action on it, because we couldn't get across the high-tension, high-power lines that were there. So, at the same time that there was our fire, there was a three-alarm fire and vegetation fire up in Woodside, a house that was fully involved up there. And so, they had launched air tankers to go in because of the vegetation that was on fire. They got there, the air tankers weren't of any use, but they were already in the air. They were diverted back to our fire over here and made, I think it was three, maybe four drops onto the fire because we couldn't attack the fire yet, and took the heat out of it, and essentially stopped the fire at that point. And then, we ended up with a lot of engines here because it was very windy, and there was a concern that that fire would get going up over the hill and then be approaching the structures, which is always our, our concern, especially with the south wind. So, it pushes it into Brisbane as opposed to the north wind pushing it out of Brisbane. And so, we had quite a few fire engines staging, ready to go up and start getting around homes. And then, we brought in specialized resources from California, CalFire, to help us with hand crew work, cutting line around the fire. And they have engines that'll get off-road too. So, we have a, one of the things that's important to know here, those don't cost us any money because we have developed and implemented a mutual threat zone. So, if we have a fire that occurs inside the province of Brisbane, air tankers, helicopters, dozers, crews, fire engines that come from the state are all free. We don't pay for them because this is a mutual threat zone. San Bruno Mountain is a, is a state responsibility, county parks area. And so, when you see those, those air tankers, and we aren't paying for them, but their, their interest is the same as ours. Don't let the fire get going, so they're going to come in and make those kinds of retardant drops onto the fire. And so, you know, one of the, the good things I was saying today is that the 12 acres that burns sort of creates you a little bit of buffer on the south side. It kind of was like a mini control burn that, that occurred. So, if you were to get a fire in that particular area, it has nowhere to go. But, you know, obviously, it didn't cover the whole backside, but it did create a little bit of a fire break for us. So, if a fire does occur, it, it doesn't have as easy of a run. So, so that was the reason for all the excitement. It, the, the power line hampered our ability, otherwise it probably would have been an acre or two fire. And it ended up lasting a lot longer just because our inability to get up and get into dealing with that fire.
Chief, can I ask a question, a clarification? Was it the transformers in town that blew, that, that had the problem which caused the transformer or the line down over off bayshore? Or was it the opposite way around?
Randy may have the answer to that. Let me just add one more thing for him. One of the things also with that power line going down, the cost of that fire and our actions and, and those of all the other resources will be reimbursed by PG&E for that line going down. And Randy probably has some information on the transformers.
So ma'am, I can give you some assumptions on it, but I think the important thing to know right now is that CalFire's law enforcement officers were out on scene, and they did direct the PG&E employees to put some of the at-question equipment into the back of their vehicle because it's part of a, it's a criminal investigation now to determine what happened, so what the responsibility is. But it appears that what happened is that they either had a strike or a line failure somewhere just on the edge of Brisbane. And this is very similar to what happened a number of years ago when we had an individual hit one of our power poles down at the community park that struck those lines down to the ground, and that caused a fault all the way back to West Hill Place where two transformers blew. And so, it started that fire up at the other end of Altamar. So, the suspicion, the understanding from people who work with these things a lot is that some fault happened, either some high wind knocked some things down. We had wires go to ground, that started the fire. But then, that going to ground, that fault caused the transformers then to blow on San Bruno Avenue. I received some information today from PG&E that, that offers some different opinions perhaps about palm fronds causing things. And I just, and I'm just making that remark to indicate that it's still under investigation.
Thank you for the information.
May I? Yes. I got the call from a neighbor from San Bruno Avenue that, oh my goodness, the transformer went out. And I know, I called, talked to Randy, and he was already on the top of this and doing the things that he was doing. But I want to tell you that I was absolutely impressed. I went there wanting to know what's happening because one of the things that happens is people are saying that there is no electricity. They know something is wrong, but they have no way of knowing what's going on. Whether it's fire or whether it's just their street or their home doesn't have any electricity. So, there is a gap in there. I don't know how residents can be informed. But I was extremely impressed with the way things were working clockwise. I mean, people, Randy, you were right on the top of that. Lisa, the police department was just absolutely fantastic. They were controlling the traffic. Everybody is a time that everybody knows the chief because they want to go through the line and go see what's happening. But the staff knows exactly what they're doing. Public works, guys were out there and taking care of the traffic. I think CDF, EMT, the county, the command center, every one of them, I think they were absolutely, they knew the seriousness of this, and they were right there. I was so proud. And if I could have hugged every one of them, I would because that's the time you realize the value of the work that they do. And I'm grateful and honored.
And I'd be happy to do my budget presentation right now.
Oh, I forgot there's a budget. Disregard.
I'm sure it's just all one big coincidence.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, one of the things I'd like to add on that, of course, you know, one of the things that, that those of us that are in this sort of business know is that the fire department has really been the lead in running Incident Command System for many, many decades, and they do a fabulous job of it. And it also speaks to why all of the other public safety responders are learning that system and why we're working. And we all do get together enough that we work it out, and it, and it works relatively seamlessly for us. But I think the important point I would like to note for folks listening is that if you haven't already, sign up for SMC Alert. I know that the council had a number of emails, three, that were pushed to you. Because what I was doing was sitting in my truck, using my iPad, sending out those messages and those updates via SMC Alert. And as those came immediately back to, to my device, I was forwarding them on to the city manager and the council, and they are fast. I mean, I was, certainly with your texts, I would hit send on the iPad and my phone would vibrate because the text was coming through. It was that quick. That's a great way to do it. The other way that we communicate to the public during this time is that Caroline Chung came in to the office, and she updated the front page of our website. We changed the, the alert status from green to yellow so that if you went to that front page, you could see that right away, and you could click on that. And the same updates that I was providing to, to everyone in town who signed up for SMC Alert were provided there. So, there's two great ways for people, and that's about the best we can do when power's out. But that information's out there, and we're trying to push it to people. They, they just have to sign up for SMC Alert. I recognize that sometimes they get things that they don't necessarily want on it. I, I would suggest that's a small sacrifice for the times when you really want information, that you sign up for that.
Yeah, no, that, that's really helpful. And you know what, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Seppi was saying. You know, even though we live in this small town, we also have our neighbors that help us out. And so, there, you know, besides the Daly City, our department, there was also the police officers from Daly City that were there. And, and so, it was nice. I mean, it was just, you know, everyone, you know, the police and the fire, you know, they're, that's their job. And it doesn't matter where they're from, I mean, they, they, they do their job, you know, admirably, and, and it's there to protect us. And so, it was nice to know that, that we have that type of backup.
Too bad we're not discussing fire department's budget, but right now I would have voted to approve.
I, I have to tell you, I was, had a very unique opportunity to view it from the beginning to the end because I was about one of four sailors out on the bay crazy enough to go out there and actually saw where the fire started, when it started. It was, it was wild out there, but I mean, I was watching those planes that would come in and dump that retardment.
Yes.
You know, just going on the slope of the hill with the angle of those big planes.
They get close.
What was it, OV-10 or something? It was circling above, a spotter plane?
Yeah, there's always a, that's the supervisor, making sure that the planes are, are coming in and not going to have any problems with each other or any other aircraft. So, they're coordinating the helicopters and, and the fixed-wing aircraft that are coming in.
And through all of that, one thing I really noticed was that there's no planes from the airport came anywhere near Brisbane.
You know, sir, my only comment on that airborne spotter is that every time we have a fire on bayshore, he seems to use a big blue truck as his release point because I, I manage to end up with a fire retardant all over my vehicle every time, so that's just lovely.
I saw it on bayshore this morning.
Well, one of the things that happens when we do, that's why it's usually a quick in, quick out, depending on the size of, of the fire, is that they put a temporary flight restriction up. So, what will happen is it changes, they make contact with San Francisco Airport, and they start going out a different direction. So, we don't, when we've had major fires over here, we will have more than one, two, three, four air tankers, maybe two, three helicopters, and they're going to use the bay to pick up the water. And so, they'll divert, we'll make notification to the airport, and they'll divert the aircraft out the different direction so we don't have an, an incident between the, the aircraft and that. But that, that one plane that's up in the air is responsible for, you know, telling which air tanker when to come in, where to go out, and where to drop.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty interesting.
And they're talking to the Incident Commander right down on the ground where Councilmember Richardson was at. And they're, they're making decisions on where to make those, those drops and, you know, so.
No, that was, that was very impressive to watch, you know, and I've never seen it from a view like that before. And so, not that I even want to again, but.
But it's interesting to understand the difference between fire being controlled and fire being contained. Because that, that was the difference that was really important to know.
And you, and you get that in structure fires where you'll knock the fire down so it's not progressing anymore, but you, you have contained the fire. Same thing with the wildland, you contain it, but you haven't completely put a line around it and separated it from its ability to get outside of that line. And control can be days away before it's actually controlled, so.
Excellent.
Since PG&E is going to pay for all this, you know, there's embers on everybody's boats too, by the way. Everybody had to use city water to wash that off.
Yeah.
Well, if that's a, if, if we can prove that, that's a cost. Isn't that true, city water?
Certainly it would be true.
Yeah.
We're making a list and checking it twice.
Thank you.
We're adding a lot of things to it.
I was going to say, the only, only dissonance, and I mean, I agree with the San Mateo Information Service, which is good, and a lot of us used it. And it was then forwarded on to the Facebook page and to the mob, and, you know. So, the information is really getting around these days. But some of the information was not very good information, particularly from PG&E, you know, when the power was going to come back on. They made three or four misstatements about that. So, that's kind of frustrating.
Yes.
Are you surprised?
They would say there are only 21 homes that don't have electrical, and then suddenly it's 1,400 homes. How could you make that kind of?
35 between 40 knot winds?
That was pretty good for PG&E.
They did well though, but I agree, under circumstances. Okay, we have a long night.
35.
Harry doesn't want to go beyond 12:30.
35 between 40, 40 knot winds.
Something else.
But we took care of fires, so the fire budget should not take that long.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, next on our agenda is budget review. And so, we're looking at the different departments. Up first is fire.
And before we do that, let me give you a quick synopsis as to what we did last week. So, just to, just to remind you what was, what we did last week, we had projected revenues of 11.6 million. We had the departments previously highlighted as massive, 11 million. Departments not previously discussed were about 1.1 million. And then, we went through a list of items for council discussion. So, the items that have, that are, that were kept in the budget at the last council meeting was about 126,600, and we still have about 312,150 left in items to be discussed. So, the new net deficit is about 1,011,000. So, that gives you an idea, you know, is the goal to get to a million-dollar deficit, is the goal to get to 975,000 deficit? So, this gives you kind of a running total as to where we're at. And then, just to let you know, the items that were removed, we had about 19,000, 20,000. And then just to let you know, the items that were removed, we had about 19,000, $20,000 were removed from travel and training and there was about 47,800 from the other items. So just to give you an idea of what transpired last week, with that, I will, if there are no questions, turn it over to fire.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. Here to present the fire department budget and those elements that go into that budget. No surprise, and you know, that the vast majority of the fire department budget is made up of personnel. The rest of it is a fairly modest amount of money in terms of the ability to run the budget and support the operations in the fire department. Discussion items, books and publications, weed abatement program, fire prevention, public education, training materials, and sinking fund. Those are the items that we wanted to discuss with you as far as how we go about in either reducing, eliminating, or funding those. I took a greater look at some of these items, so I have some thoughts on, on the ones that we definitely are interested in keeping. One of them for sure, from my perspective, is the sinking fund piece. What we've done, and we did this, started back in about 2004, and we found that most of the departments really weren't putting away money, all three of the agencies weren't putting money away to buy the expensive items. They're little, but they're expensive. The protective equipment, small equipment, a whole host, hose, nozzles, ladders, self-painted breathing apparatus, all those kinds of things. So what happened is when we needed to make those kinds of major replacements, we'd come to you and it'd be a huge capital expense that nobody was prepared for. So over the years, we've been putting aside in each of the cities and the sinking fund, those dollars, to have it build up to a point and it's on an amortization scale where we know how much we need each year in order to replace those, say, in a five-year period, seven, eight, and so forth. So my preference would be to, to keep that sinking fund funded and continue with that.
Could you identify where that is in the budget material that we have?
You know what, it would be... Fixed assets, if you're looking at the...
Page 105. Which page? Page 105?
I don't have, I don't have a page. It would be the layout of the general fund of the fire department budget.
Sinking fund. It would be page 105.
There you go, yeah.
Have you thought about sinking fund replacement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one there.
Okay, got it.
The other area that we do need to retain some dollars in, and that is the weed abatement program. And it's something that we can look at reducing that budget, but I need to advocate for the fact that we have to keep some dollars in that in order to maintain the fire break that we have CAL FIRE hand crews come in each year. We supply all the equipment in order to keep that fire break maintained. So we do need to keep some dollars in that budget there. I have some ideas on maybe some other areas, if the council has some questions about what we should do that, but maybe some other ideas on what we might be able to reduce in order to get some savings. But if you have some questions on any one of these items, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions, Chief?
So where is the weed abatement? Make sure I got that identified. It's under...
On page 104 at the top, under special department expense.
I don't have the same thing you're looking at.
It's 52, 241.
Right.
And then it's even got an asterisk with the description under it.
Yeah, the way the paragraph here reads, will you have that in front of you or not? It's a little confusing to me because it, it seems as if this is the amount of money that's put in to do something that then we get reimbursed for. And so that's what's not clear about it to me because it was previously at an 8,000 level, then last year it went to 18,000 and now back down to zero. And the asterisk seems to suggest, well, that's because we're going to get reimbursed, but.
No, and actually the history on the dollars that are there, there is, council in previous years had put extra dollars in there to deal with some other vegetation issues, trees and so forth in the community. And so it's been sitting there. And so we, that's one of the opportunities we have in terms of maintaining some dollars in that account, but cutting it down so we just support the weed abatement portion of it. And there is no reimbursement that we get for weed abatement.
Okay. Well, you do for the private property owners.
That's only if we, if we spend the money and then we get the money back.
Right.
So we don't get anything.
Right.
And so that's actually taken out of someplace else, but in a sense, I guess you could look at it that way.
So what do you recommend?
Well, we would need, you know, what I was looking at is in order to do, to continue doing what we're doing, handle the program and do the, keep the fire break going, I was suggesting, or would suggest, that we reduce that by 10,000 and leave it at 8,500.
Eighty-eight, fifty?
Or eighty-five? Eighty-five total?
It'd be eighty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So being consistent with what was in the...
Yeah, it was there before.
Right.
You know, and if in future years, we want to add some more money back in to do some of those other kinds of things that were removing eucalyptus trees, that kind of a thing, that we had done some of it with, we could, we could look at doing that in future years.
You know, I'm just curious, is that what you spent the last fiscal year? It was about 8,500.
It may be a little bit less, but what happens is that we end up having to buy, we end up supplying all the weed eaters, all of, we have to buy, bring in sanitation facility. There's a lot that kind of goes into it. The crews are fairly cheap to come in and do the work, but then we have to provide all of the materials associated with that. We also charge this fund in order to do the, all of the notifications for the weed abatement program and all of that. So we're close to that. I mean, it's, I'd feel comfortable at eighty-five, saving the 10,000, reducing it by 10,000.
So just under that thousand, the fire prevention, you need that too then, right? That kind of goes along.
Well, what I was going to say is that, you know, the fire prevention publication, public education, training materials, if you notice, we'll send out the wildfire operation, evacuation, information and that. That's kind of what we use the thousand dollars for, to meld that out apart from the weed abatement. If we do any fire prevention programs for the schools and that, it's a pretty small amount of money that we use to promote the public education side of it. So, you know, keeping that thousand dollars would be important. The other area that I think, the other area I think that we could reduce is $20,000 in the equipment maintenance budget. So when I, actually I'll just cut to the chase. I would propose that we could probably save not necessarily all the items on this list, but by eliminating the books and publication, reducing the weed abatement by 10,000, and reducing our equipment maintenance expense, which would drop it down by 20,000, then we could save here 31,005. If you go to the equipment maintenance, let's see what our budget is, 61,000. We drop that back down to about the 41,000 range. Now, you know, we've had some major expenses that come with fire apparatus, but that 20,000 doesn't cover all that. It covers fuel, it, there's a lot of things in there that covers the expenses of equipment maintenance.
You like to have the flexibility.
But I think we could, if we dropped it back down, you know, we'll, I'd be comfortable with that for the year and let's see where it's at. So I think we could return 31,005 by doing those things I just mentioned.
All right. And Chief, when, you know, this money that goes towards these things, are we talking about the things that are at the Brisbane Fire Station or throughout?
Yeah, this is, this is absolutely, this is just for Brisbane's expenses, the city of, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the way, the way it works at JPA is all the equipment and operations belong to the cities, but it's the staff, the management staff is, is what's given to us as the umbrella. And so from a training perspective and having a full management staff, it really works to our...
Let me tell you what you may see when you see the check dispersments each month. You see a check going to North County or to Daly City and that. What we do is we do joint purchases and then we just bill back to the individual budgets. So if we can get a price for fire hose and buy it on a bulk rate, then what we do is just reallocate that back, Daly City pays it, share Pacifica theirs, and Brisbane theirs. And so what will happen is that we'll send a bill over here, then whatever that piece is will get charged back into that appropriate line item that's over here. But that's one of the beauties of North County Fire was it creates an economy of scale where we can buy a lot of things together and then just, and get a savings that way. So there are other savings that come into play with being a part of, you know, North County Fire Authority. But you're correct. The budget we administer over here stays completely separate from any other, any other budget. We manage this budget separately, as we do Daly City, as we do Pacifica. But if we do training and let's say we have to buy plywood to do ventilation training and all the, then what we do is we use that allocation number, 65%, Daly City pays for, 9% Brisbane pays for, and 27, whatever it adds up, 27%. That's how we fix it up. So we're able to just go and do things and then just share the cost back and forth. I mean, to move on.
I kind of missed, were we going to knock equipment maintenance down to?
Yeah, 20,000.
By 20, so we'd end up at 41, 270.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're, if you're okay with this, I'll get with the finance director and reconcile this.
Okay. Are you going to cover all the things that have been pushed down to zero? Is that what your intent was? Because then I don't need to ask my next question.
I don't know what, what you're, what do you mean?
Next question is fire inspection on page 103. How's that being handled now? Obviously it's handled somehow.
Fire inspection. Stuart, am I looking at something different than?
Right. So the fire inspection was something that we had contracted with the JPA for previously. However, the, under the agreement we currently have, the fire inspection is provided as part of the overall cost of the JPA agreement, so it's not as specific, one separated out as it was in the past.
What we've done is be more specific, is you get it for free. We used to charge you $160,000 for it.
That's what I'm seeing.
And we, we went ahead and because of the relationship that exists within our organization, when you couldn't afford it anymore, we went ahead and maintained. That's why this whole vegetation management is done pretty much on a shoestring, us trying to make it happen with very few people involved. And you don't pay anything for that to, to the fire inspection services that you get. So, and that's really because we have a good relationship. And I'll just be frank with you, if it wasn't that way, we wouldn't be laying off $160,000 and just, and just making our people work harder to do it. So that's a good thing for you there.
Okay. Good to know about that because it wasn't explained here. There's another set of zeros. I'm sure that these things are handled in some way. And that has, on page 101, there's a whole series of things under communications that also changed last year and so obviously it's being handled some other way.
Let me take a look at that.
Fire sprinkler system monitoring, computer modem, phone line, et cetera. See all that?
Yeah, and I think what, you know, what's happened over the years, the EOC, I believe, has to do with your EOC here in Brisbane, is that correct? So that was probably because it got reconfigured differently. There's no more, there isn't a cost associated with the fire department budget, so it went to zero. You know, when we take a look at other kinds of things, fire system, the sprinkler system, I'm not exactly sure why that went to zero. And maybe it gets pushed someplace else. The phone lines, I do know as it relates to phone lines, when we took a look at things, we had lots of phone lines that we probably didn't need and so we reduced that. Or it might have been pushed over into the other, you know, the EOC part of the, you know, the budget and something else. But I don't know why that's zero. It's probably a good thing that it's zero, but I don't know exactly what that is. We can look into that and find out for you, but.
That moved over to the T, the TEA system alert, didn't, didn't it have some kind of switch over there?
It's not, there's no relationship between this zero and, if you go up to the top, ZTRON and TEA. And actually, that's kind of changing a little bit too because we had to, through the narrowbanding requirement of the federal government for us to change over, we are changing out each and every fire station. It's alerting systems, it's paging system, we had to buy new radios, all kinds of stuff. But fortunately, we got a grant, one of the only agencies in the county that got a grant for almost $400,000 to do this changeover for all three of the fire departments. But that will, that will hopefully keep the price the same. We're still going to have to pay monitoring charges for alerting fire stations. It just may be done not through ZTRON, but through a different vendor. We just haven't changed the name because we really not sure what the name is going to be yet. But it does the same function.
Staying on that same page, so we had, we have the land phones. So in 0910 and 1011, it was a thousand dollars and it went up to 7,900.
I think this is kind of what the fire department did, was look at what the overall cost of communications and they were trying to combine all the different kinds of phones and phone type services into one. If you look at the actual costs for communications over the last few years, you know, it ranges between 13, 14,000 and 9,000. The current budget is in the 14,000 range. You know, this is based on past history, our best understanding. Obviously, anything that isn't spent here gets saved and will go into ending fund balance.
So what you're saying, where the zeros are pushed up into the land?
I think, I think that's what you...
That does make some sense.
Right. I think that's what you guys had asked us to do previously.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. That makes sense.
You ready for me to move to the next slide?
I have one or two more questions.
Okay, Ray.
Would you talk a little bit about the overtime? And it seems like a pretty consistent number overtime. And I was just wondering, you know, where that comes from, what the...
Yeah, and the reason your overtime, yeah, because your overtime budget went, your overtime budget went up when we eliminated three firefighter positions. So in order to staff each day with three firefighters, we used to have a relief firefighter. So each shift had four people and at times there would be four people on the engine, but anytime somebody was off on leave time, we wouldn't pay overtime. We'd have one person extra and we'd run a three-person engine company. Some years ago, we eliminated three positions through budget reductions. And so then what happens is you basically still need to staff it with three, so you on any time, about a third of the year or more, which you'll see later on in our presentation, you're needing to pay overtime in order for that engine to be staffed with three firefighters. And sometimes it gets even greater than that if we end up with injuries and you don't just have the perfect one person off at a time. It could be more than that. But that's what that $235,000 is for, to maintain three-person staffing.
Right. Good. Now, would you sort of explain why you need three people? I mean, I think I know, but it'd be nice to...
Well, you know, we'll kind of get into that in the next slide because you'll see there's some, it probably would be better for me to just handle it when we get to the slide, talks about some alternatives.
Just make sure that people understand the number of firefighters we need and why we need them and so forth.
Sure.
Okay.
We can talk about that and you'll have some questions about that when we get there.
Okay, great.
Okay. I'll go to the next slide. There we go. Once again, you have our budget on the left and then you have the, essentially what it would look like for the, each of the reductions, if they were needed to be put in place, 10, 20, 30, 40 percent. I'll go to the next slide. The service delivery alternatives, and as we get to the next slide after this, you'll see how those cuts come into play. But essentially, I'll just tell you that you get beyond 20 percent in cuts and you don't have a fire department anymore. You're going to have to find another way of providing a fire department. We were asked to provide you with some alternatives. I'm only providing these to you because if you had a crisis and you, from a fiscal perspective, wanted to take a look at this, I'm not advocating for a two-person fire company, but you do need to know, there is nothing in this... There is nothing in this country or this state that tells you what level of fire protection you must have. There are some standards out there, but essentially there's nothing that guides you. It's what you can afford, it's what you want to provide. It's kind of like having an insurance policy. You, you buy what you can afford and you take the risk in between that. Typically, we staff with three people on a fire engine. There are some departments that staff with four. There are some departments right next to us that have five on a fire engine. It's about the workload that can get accomplished when you get to an incident and the task can be, that could be handled at a fire. If you have more or less, then you're gonna get less tasks done. You may still be able to save people, but you're gonna, the fire's gonna get bigger until you get more resources coming in. But if we ended up with alternatives, looking at the, the service delivery here, if we, if you came to me and said, we absolutely have made a, a decision that our priority is that you must save two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, then I would eliminate the overtime and we would operate with two people on a, on a fire company. That's not as simple as just doing that because right now with three people, every fire engine in this county has three people. Part of the system of the boundary drop is that we move and cover for each other. So as stations are open, an engine will move to cover that and vice versa. When you need coverage, coverage comes into your community. So in order for us to accomplish this two-person fire company, we'd have to re-engineer the way we do it and essentially move it back around to Daly City. In a sense, Daly City would have to subsidize you. Because if we impacted South City, they would say, wait a minute, why are we, you can't reciprocate. You can't come over like you can now and help us and vice versa. So we would have to re-engineer the system. We've looked at it. It's something that could be done, but essentially it makes this fire company here sort of, it, it has an inability to go any place other than Brisbane. Now, it can still show up with two people and do work somewhere. But all things being equal, and if you said, that's our priority, we've made a, a conscious decision, the fire chief, you need to reduce this, that's one way you could look at saving two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, assuming that you don't have more than one person off a day. Otherwise, you'd end up with not realizing those savings. But that's the equivalent of us trying to deal with the leave time and not staffing with three people all the time. And that would probably about, about thirty percent of the year, we would, we would not have three people on a fire engine if we reduce the overtime budget.
Yeah. And Chief, if you could just talk a little bit more about the relationship that we would have with the other cities. So if we went to that two-person fire company, if, if there's a situation in Brisbane, South City, San Bruno, whatever, they're bringing three. We could not do the same.
So let me tell you how we'd view this. We would view this fire company as part of our nine fire companies in our system. North County Fire Authority is viewed as being one complete unit. We're basically one department as an organization. So what we would do is we would just, it would be like us absorbing that. We would still get to a response and we'd still provide a response outside of Brisbane, Daly City or Pacifica. It would just be this one particular place. Engine ninety-three would be the three-person company that would have to move and we'd have to move something over in behind it. And essentially, it would just be a way of getting you through a time when you're down. But you'd be viewed as being part of North County Fire Authority and our nine fire companies that are staffed every day. So you wouldn't be looked at, I wouldn't look at it as being as, as an individual entity that now is, is neutralized and can't do anything. It's just they won't be able to reciprocate by themselves. We would have to send something else in and we'd do it in a lot of different ways.
So if there was a situation, say, over by Oyster Point, Daly City would respond?
What, what we would do, now, we, we would probably have to roll an engine and us, and the two-person company to most things. That way you would get, you know, you'd get your response. At a certain extent, you'd kind of be enhancing the response because right now we don't need to send in two engines to a medical emergency. We send one engine. But, and we may not on a medical emergency send two engines, but that two-person company could do the medical component. We'd still be launching the full response as normal for a fire or some other kind of incident that takes more than one type of a company. But you wouldn't, what I'm trying to say is that we wouldn't impact our neighbors because we'd pick it up with the other fire companies. So that's what I'm saying, re-engineering would be, yeah, essentially they would sit here. But if there was a fire in the Bay Shore, they wouldn't be included in the normal response as counting for a full engine, but they'd still be responding. So let's say Engine ninety-three in the Bay Shore and Engine eighty-one would show up instead of with six people, they'd show up with five people. We wouldn't count them in the response. We'd just bring more engines over out of our system to fulfill that. So, yeah, you, you just, you just don't have the ability to move into South San Francisco, Daly City, San Bruno, Millbrae, and move and cover their fire stations because you only have two people during that time. So we would do that with some other company. We'd send either Station ninety-three, Station ninety-two, Station ninety-one, seventy-one, seventy. I mean, we'd send one of the other companies to do that.
Okay. So it can be done?
It can be done. I mean, we, we just have to work very hard not to, not to impact our neighbors. Otherwise, they're not gonna go for, they're not gonna go for subsidizing us. You know, and South City right now is running a similar type of, of fire company with two people on it. But they're not in the, they're not in the system. They don't receive money like the rest of the agencies. They've, they've stayed separate. They've not been a part of the JPA in that way. And they made a, they made a commitment not to impact us when they did it. And so I have to make the same commitment that we wouldn't impact them if we did go to this two-person type of, of arrangement.
So where is that station?
Let's see. Where is, and where is that? Where's that located? Is that off of Hillside? Yeah. It's kind of, it's, it's kind of in the, probably in the middle of their, of their fire stations. They've kind of have it in a good spot where it isn't really something that, yeah, is all by itself. It kind of gets mixed in. So. The, the obviously, which we'll talk and, you know, when we're looking about making cuts, the other thing you look at doing is you look at just running always a two-person fire company year-round and use overtime to backfill and for the days that you'd have somebody off. And that would save you about the four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. But you'd be making a, a commitment of, of going to that permanently year-round. The reason I don't suggest that one unless we're really into those kinds of very, very difficult times is that it's pretty hard to lay off three firefighters and then bring three firefighters back if you get the dollars and cents back. It's, it's not elastic enough to do that. It's not to say it couldn't be done, but I, you know, it's not something we should do right now and then say, oh, well, I would like to have, you know, those three firefighters back a year later. So if you're moving to that, then you're looking at something, you're gonna have to have a real discussion about whether or not that's what you want in terms of, of the service delivery on a permanent basis in Brisbane. Then obviously, the other alternative would be to look at completely changing how we do it and look at a contract for services of which, you know, we would have to do a lot of work and depending on the provider and the arrangement, you might be able to save a million dollars. But you're not gonna get a fire station sitting in Brisbane and save a million dollars. You're gonna get a fire company coming from some distance, Station ninety-three covering this area. Now, in some cases, the response time would be similar to what people get. In other cases, it may be three or four minutes longer. There would be, there would, there would be, you know, it's, it's not a great thing. Any one of these, if I thought they were really good, I wouldn't have been spending your money for the last twenty years doing it differently. So it's not something I'm saying you should look at doing. It's only if you had no other choice and you said, we still want something, decisions we'd have to make and, you know, you'd have to look at what those priorities would be. And I'd help you along the way in my, my observations.
Yeah. Option, option three would get us eliminated off the council.
So, you know, essentially, we're kind of looking at the same thing, not reducing overtime. But, but if you look at the ten percent cut, you know, two hundred and twenty thousand, it's basically reducing the overtime budget at a ten percent cut. The twenty percent cut is what we just talked about, permanently eliminating three firefighters. And then after you get beyond twenty percent, you have to have a different way of operating fire. You're gonna have to look at something else because we wouldn't be able to operate a fire department with what we have today. And I'd be happy to answer any, you know, other questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief in regards to different cuts in the budget scenarios that he's provided?
Well, I just wanted to make a.
You, you had a question. I don't know if I covered it or not in the beginning about how we.
You, you did handle it very well.
Okay.
And wanna make it clear that we're not, you know, anticipating doing anything so drastic. But we wanted to really understand our situation. And the only way to really understand it is saying, you know, if we were to do something drastic, just hypothetically, you know, how would this impact this?
Right.
We need to know, you know, what the situation is in order to make, you know, responsible decisions about allocating funds.
Right.
And I think all of us understand, as we said earlier, that, you know, nothing more important than fire and belief.
Right. And, and, and I just have to tell you that, you know, if, if we get to that point where there's just not a lot of resources and you have some hard decisions to make, there are some alternative ways you, you approach it. There are some limitations on what the outcomes would be as it relates to property damage and those kinds of things. And we can go through that if we get, you know, that far into it.
Well, we're hoping we don't have to, but.
Right. But, but you can see where we're at.
World sometimes takes pretty awful turns as, you know, yeah, so.
So.
I, I wanted to ask just one, and maybe this is inappropriate. You can, so we wanna wait on this. But I thought we were gonna also talk about the fire station situation?
That's coming up next.
That's coming up next. Okay.
Right after this.
Great. Hold off.
So I did wanna talk to you about the, you know, these different scenarios that you've presented. Because, you know, at this time, you know, we have, we have reserves. We anticipate that Rethology will provide us with the necessary revenue to help cover part of the loss of EWR. But of course, that's not guaranteed. And, you know, part of what we're trying to do as the decision makers for presenting a budget to, to the city is, is, you know, we need to be responsible. We need to make sure that if, if those revenue sources do not come to us, we're, we're prepared. And so, so I wanna talk a little bit more about this just because I know it's sensitive to the community. People don't want to talk about, you know, eliminating services that, that could potentially affect their safety. But we're in that type of, of reality and it, we would be not doing our job if, if we didn't, if we didn't have a thorough discussion about it. So if you could go back to the.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just say one thing. I mean, we've said it at the beginning and just say it one more time that the whole idea of this is to prepare for the worst.
Absolutely.
Hope for the best. And, and that's what we really need to convey. All we're doing is preparing for the worst. I feel optimistic.
I feel optimistic too. You know, I mean, it's just, you know.
But at the same time, part of our job is to do that preparation. So.
Yes. But you're absolutely right. I mean, you know, at this time, you know, we are feeling optimistic, but we gotta prepare too. So, and, and by talking about, you know, situations like this, it doesn't mean that we're gonna do it, but you have to have the discussion. So if you could go back to, to where you had the, the, the ten percent. Yeah, right there. That, that's.
The alternatives?
Yeah. So I mean, we're looking at the ten, the twenty, and then, and then.
And these, these aren't necessarily the ten and the twenty. These were kind of like something you could do on the interim basis if you were, you know, temporarily needed to save some money. The more permanent, they're similar to the next one, which is here's the ten and the twenty. Those are the two scenarios that, that would happen if you said, there is the permanent cut that you're gonna have to take. Beyond twenty, we don't, we have to do something different on how we handle a fire, fire services. But those are the two scenarios that if you came to us and said, hey, we've analyzed all, everything there is. We've made a decision as a, as the elected body what the priorities are, and this is what we want done, then we can talk about what that means. And that's essentially kind of what I covered earlier in terms of the two approaches.
I know you talked a little bit about response time. So with the ten percent cut scenario, someone makes the phone call and they, they have an emergency.
Right.
Explain to, to me so that the public knows what's the difference?
In either one of these scenarios, response time is not impacted. So the time doesn't change because you still have a fire station and a fire company. The only timeframe that changes is that you have thirty-three percent less capacity with a two-person fire company than with a three. So initially, when they arrive, there is only two versus three if it's a fire. And they'll need to essentially do those things that are saving life and then work their way to property. And as more resources are coming in, which would be coming anyway, they'll then have to work. But they're gonna be behind the curve in terms of progression of the fire. Now, there's things that they can do and all that. But you're essentially, if you wanna look at it, you know, the, the way you measure a fire deployment is speed and weight. How quickly you can get there and how many people you can get to the, to that incident as fast as you can. That minimizes property loss. That gives you your best chance for getting inside and making a rescue if you need to. Two people can make a rescue. It's, you know, there's a requirement, if you're gonna fire a fire inside of a, of a burning building, you have to have four people present to do that. But if you have a known rescue or you think there's a, a rescue, two people can go inside prior to those other firefighters getting there and you have less than four. You're just, you're just running a different, it's a different approach. Instead of going in and fighting the fire simultaneously, doing things, you're really focusing on rescue and not letting, not worrying about the fire. And then you'll get back and engage into fighting that fire. So, and, and I gotta tell you again, there's nothing that guides us absolutely under the law, under regulations. It tells you all the way from no fire protection to the highest level you can afford. That's what's available to you. Now, there are some factors that would come into play potentially. If a community had no fire protection, your fire insurance is gonna go up a whole lot, but not in this particular, what we're talking about in these scenarios. That's not the case. But, but the time, as far as response is concerned, doesn't change until we decide or you would make a decision and say, we wanna deploy out of one less fire station. And where would that fire station come from? Well, it probably, it'd come farther away. That's where your time would change. And that's the draconian, that's the, that's the, we gotta eliminate the fire department, worst-case scenario.
Yes. Now, currently, we, thank you, Ray. Currently, we have three firefighters.
On duty each day.
Okay. So if there was a fire and it was inside someone's house, we still could not fight it inside?
No. But you would still do some suppression actions with two people while you're waiting for the next due fire companies to come in. I mean, you know, when I first came in the fire service, we weren't taught to fight fire inside. We were taught to fight fire from the outside. So, you know, the training that you do, if you're in that scenario, is you still can put a hose through the window and all around and, and, you know, suppress the fire. Now, there, how much more damage are you gonna cause and those kinds of things? That, that's the issue that comes into play.
Okay. And, and during our, our subcommittee meetings, you know, we talked about, you know, where would the, if firefighters were laid off, where would they go? And you, you said that they would probably be.
Well, i- i- if it's, if the timing is right, within North County Fire, primarily in Daly City, because we have some turnover that, that occurs where people are going, we've always, you know, when Pacifica had to go through a reduction, we accommodated the firefighters and placed them in Brisbane. One in Brisbane and the rest of them in Daly City because the time was right. We would, if, if we needed to make a reduction, we'd certainly look to place them so they wouldn't lose a job. And we have been successful and probably would be pretty close to being able to do that most of the time. But not always, depending on the year, depending on when something like this may occur. So it may mean that you could reduce and not see a, people lose their job, just get reassigned, picked up into, you know, another agency. So the issue could, could be that that's not even gonna be a problem. But then you have a fire company that has less people on it.
Okay. And Chief, how long have you been the chief of, of this organization?
Ten, well, ten years.
Ten years. And, you know.
Let me tell you about, I came here in two thousand and two, so I've been the chief for ten years. I've been the chief for nine years of North County Fire Authority.
All right. And, and, you know, of course, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't predict the future, you know. And then sometimes when you take away something, that's when something bad happens. But based upon the last ten years, you know, were there any situations that you know of where? know of where, you know, not having that, if we, if we were at a two-person station, would that have been...
Well, once again, I got to, I got to tell you that you don't have the crystal ball. If we knew when things were going to happen, everybody would be at work today, and that's how we'd, we'd handle that. So you really got to look at anything that, that you do.
It's like the insurance policy, right? I mean, you're...
Yeah. It's, it's the risk you're willing to, you know, to take.
Mm-hmm.
But what I'll tell you is that, yeah, you have less risk probably in terms of frequency that's occurred over here, but you have all the same level of fire problem, medical problem. You don't run the same number of calls as other, you know, fire stations or cities do, but all it takes is one. But you're right, over the course of 10 years, you've not had any destructive fires that have occurred. But that's not to say that, that won't happen. You know, we've, we've had, I think, you know, in 10 years, I've, we had, what, car fire in some apartments that caused a garage catch fire and lapped up and started to get into the second floor. We've had some, a vegetation fire that was fairly significant. We've probably had a handful of those. We primarily are providing a medical level of service with the ability to fight fire. So, but once again, it's back to saying, you know, if you couldn't afford it, where would you, you know, what was the best way to spend your money and what would you be accomplishing? And, and we would talk about that. And essentially, with a two-person company, you'd be providing a medical response with some limited capability to do some suppression, and all those other resources that would have been responding, even if you were a three person, still coming as well.
Okay.
I guess statistically, then, the medical calls have been like plus 80?
Yeah. You know, over here, it's, that's a vast majority. They're, they're very high. In Daly City, they're more like 68%. We have a lot of fire issues and problems there. But yeah, traditionally, the fire service is, is been a very value-added service in that they don't just sit and wait for the fire. They're going immediately to the neighborhood to deal with a medical emergency, which is great because you have paramedics showing up to take care of people. And so if you had to wait for an ambulance to come with a paramedic, you're going to wait quite a while. And that's why we have the system in this county where neighborhood fire stations provide paramedic-level service and can do pretty much everything that's being done in an emergency room, with the exception of stroke types of things. But they basically bring an emergency room to your door.
Are all the firefighters trained to be paramedics?
Not all, but every day...
Under the graduation, you'd...
Every day, every company has to have a minimum of one, one paramedic. So we don't have to have everybody being a paramedic, which would cost you more money if that was the case. But every day, every fire company has to have at least one person working that day has to be a paramedic. Sometimes it's two, just because of the way it, it ends up being. There are maybe three, depending on who's working and trades and overtime and all of that.
Or Chief, aren't most of the ones in Brisbane got the paramedic?
Yeah, quite a few are here are paramedics, but they're not, they're not all of them. And, and we felt like, why limit it? But if we were to hire, we probably wouldn't hire back more paramedics. So if we added three more on, we wouldn't necessarily make all three of them paramedics.
Yeah. I know there's an added stipend to that, but...
Right.
I know at one point, we made a transition from non-paramedics to taking paramedic, you know, qualified.
It's kind of feast or famine. You never, you know, it's kind of like you get a whole bunch trained, if guys leave, then you're down again. And, you know, it, it takes a long time to become a paramedic, so...
Sure. You can continue with your presentation, Chief.
You want us to move on to the fire station? Or unless you have any other questions on the budget, we can move to the fire station portion of this?
Yeah, we can move on to the station right now.
Okay. Come on, Randy.
So I drew the plum opportunity to present that. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. Based on the reality of me following up with my Public Works Department and the other reality that I have 11 departments that work for me, I've got enough paperwork over here to make a really good dent in the commissioning of an anaerobic digestion. So with your consent, I'll stay here so I can have that information at my fingertips in case you have any detailed questions for me. And I believe the clerk is bringing me up. Yep, that looks like my page. So let's talk about Station 81.
So are we segueing into Public Works now?
No, we're going to do the fire station analysis, sir. That's it. We're going to do that first.
Fire, the fire department.
It's, it's sort of that integration between fire and, and Public Works. So there we go. Obviously, that's a picture of the front door over at Station 81. This is the background on it. The building was originally built in 92. I think probably shortly after the notice of completion was signed, the original contractor had to come back and fix some roof leaks that were already identified. Leaks seemed to continue to appear shortly, some small ones, some big ones. There were a lot of repairs, many things we had to do. About 10 years later, we started to find some real mold back in the northeast corner of the building. That was torn down, that was remediated. We did some repairs on the roof at that point in time. And then it seems, as I was looking at the history of it, this seems to be occurring in 10-year cycles. And then it was in 2010, mold was discovered in the apparatus bay. I think it was originally discovered, the firefighters were just running a comm cable through between, from an office to the apparatus bay, and they noticed the mold in there. So we started tearing off those, some, some pieces of that. We went through and did some air quality samples and found that it was significantly infected in the living quarters. So that's why the crew was removed off-site nearly as, as soon as we could figure it out, because the levels were just too high really for people to continue to live there. And then we relocated to this lovely building, the interim Station 81. That happened in November of 2010. So I've got this picture up there for you because I want to try and explain to you what the problem is. So this is a Google view of the building. And what you see there is really a four-piece roof. So you've got those three large pieces, those rectangles. I don't know what color you think those are. I think they're light red, being colorblind. But those are hip roofs. That, that's the type of structure that is. And the big one in the middle, that's the apparatus bay. At the back end of that, you can almost see is, is another smaller roof. That's where a lot of the equipment is. So really, what you have is a roof that's got four big sections on the top of it. And one of the challenges that we're going to see, that I'm going to show you a close-up picture here, is at the edge of each hip roof, as it comes down to the wall of the building, you see a dark line around there. And that dark line is going to be really important because that's really where the problem is. And it's this. So what we have there is it's referred to as an interior roof-to-wall membrane. So that roof, that hip roof that you were looking at in the last photo, that orange or ready or rust color, you see that on the left side there. And you also see below it in a little valley and a little trough, there's a type of rubber membrane in there. And to the right of it is a parapet. And that tape that you see in the right-hand side shows that parapet is a little bit more than a foot high. So what is happening on all of those roof sections is that rainwater, rather than coming down and discharging directly off the roof or discharging into like a metal gutter as you would have on your roof, it's discharging onto this rubber membrane. And that's where we're having the leaks. And unfortunately, I, I've done some history with one of the architects that was working for the original firm, which is no longer in business. And at the time, this is one of those things that everybody thought this was going to be the greatest type of roofing system in the world. We have a number of analogies in the public works world. Polybutylene piping was supposed to be the best thing since canned beer and sliced bread. Turned out to be not so much. This system also is turning out to not be so much. It just, we can't seem to get it fixed and to keep it fixed. We've been out there multiple times with it. So as a result of that, we looked and, and we tried to see, well, what are we going to do with this building? So I think there are two big decisions that we have to make about it. One of them is, do we repair the building? And, and I've got repair in quotation marks because there are a couple of different options you could do as far as repairs. And what those different options give you is increasing costs and increasing certainty that the repairs are going to stick. And the other question is rebuild elsewhere. So let me go to the second question first. And, and talking about, why would we build it elsewhere? Why would we consider putting that fire station somewhere else? I think you're all well aware that we're looking at an EIR for a project out in the Baylands. Both the developer-sponsored project and its variant assume, anticipate that they're going to have to provide for increased police and fire service. The community-proposed project and the developer-sponsored project, the DSP, both show a charter high school north of the existing station. But the transportation plan, that infrastructure plan, doesn't yet show how you get to that high school. So right now, the way you would get there is to drive in the front of the apparatus bay and out the back. Or you could take the access road to M&amp;E, which is just south of the fire station and just north of the intersection at Beishore Lagoon and Tunnel. The problem with that access, as it exists now, is it only allows you to make a right-hand turn as you're traveling north on the inbound and a right-hand turn going north on the outbound. So it, it's not really a very good connection if you would have a couple hundred kids going to school there. So that's one opportunity. And the third reason why we would think that, that we might want to consider or at least be informed before we started to spend a lot of money on repairing a facility is that we understand that the demand from all of the projects and all of their variants are all going to most likely require new or expanded fire facilities. I can't tell you how much of that it is yet because the document hasn't been studied all the way through, but there are certain service parameters, response times and such that are being studied in there, and that's going to inform that final question. So we don't even know that even if we had a fully functional, fully watertight Station 81 in place, if it would be the right-sized station. So those questions seem kind of important before we go along. So now let's talk about the repairs, if you will. So the first option is, is you replace that existing membrane with a new, modern, high-density polyethylene membrane, something that is more equivalent to what is on our roof here. And you also replace all of the ancillary connections. So you replace the scuppers, you replace the downspouts, all the little crickets, everything that makes groundwater go the way, or surface water on a roof go the way it's supposed to go. That's a $300,000 cost just for the roof. And then you get to spend another $200,000 because on the interior, you've got to take all the wall sheathing off, you've got to come in and completely remediate the mold, and then you've got to put all the wall sheathing back on. The second option is you could rebuild the heights at their existing roof, but you make the slopes a little shallower. You lay them back a little bit, and you try and extend that roof line over the parapet wall. That, that's not a bad way to do it. The construction cost is going to be greater because now you're not talking about just taking sheathing and membrane off, now you're talking about structural framing that has to be changed. The next option, you could raise the roof line and you could connect all three of those hip roof sections. Again, much more structural framing involved, a much higher cost. And one of the things that's important to know, and this is one of the things that's always left me the most concerned about this, is when I talk with the architects about rebuilding this, even on this one, the, the third option that I've got on this slide right here, it only removes 80% of the inside connections because you've got that, primarily, it's where that equipment piece is on the side. That doesn't fully remove those inside parapet wall connections. So you still have a place for this roof to leak, the way it's designed. Here's my last slide on talking about how to do the repairs. So it's been suggested that we do a temporary overhead awning, you know, some kind of a, kind of a big sunroof, if you will. Call it a sunroof, a windroof, something to keep the rain off. We haven't spent any money doing that. I, I think, I'm quite certain that a structure that's this big is going to have some significant structural engineering on it. As you well know, we have really high wind loads out here, and certainly, we had really high wind loads on Saturday. And the problem you're going to experience with a structure like this, while I think it initially seems like an elegant idea, is that it's going to experience winds both on its upper and its lower surface, so it runs the opportunity or risk of operating like an airplane wing. So unless you really design that thing to be held down and have the tie-downs on it, there might be the appearance of a B-2 landing at SFO if this thing just took off and went flying, and we certainly wouldn't want that to happen. So as far as my, my accuracy of my information on this, the first design that we talked about, where I, where I talked about the total cost being about half a million, council back in 2007 had approved a preliminary engineering budget for that, so that was done. I had an architect look at that. It was like an $18,000 budget. And so I'm fairly confident in those estimates, you know, giving some order of magnitude for ENR-type increases, for CPI-type increases. And I also want to note that staff did request, but we were denied federal funding to repair and replace the station. That was one of the things we've done. And I think that's the end of my slides. So I'd be happy to take questions on that, and I'm glad the chief's still here. Maybe he can weigh in if it becomes too challenging for me.
Any questions from the council?
I have one question.
Sure.
Is the building, if we were to do nothing and continue to have our staff in the temporary quarters, is the building deteriorating more as time goes by to make these options no
I would really have to get in there and do another analysis of that to give you a completely honest answer, ma'am. My, my gut answer is that, yes, we are most likely during occasional storm events experiencing some water, water intrusion in there. It is doing more damage. I can't imagine a situation under which it's doing so much damage to the framing of the building that it would take these options out of play. My suspicion is that what it's doing is it's causing more mold, so you may have more mold remediation, but I don't think you're going to find a buckling of the vertical structural components of the building.
Thank you.
Clara?
Randy, at the subcommittee level, we, we discussed about going in and stripping the walls.
Yes, sir.
And never really heard anything back on that with, you know, just to eliminate any more potential molding, just opening them up and taking out what's in there. What's the status on that?
Was it a request to, to give you a budget number to do that, sir, or...
Well, I think, yeah, we were talking about that very thing, about, you know, more molding is to go in and, and take off the sheet rock, you know, what it would cost to do that, just to open the walls up.
You know, I'll have to apologize, sir, because I don't remember that being a request, but I'll be happy to get that number for you. If it's just a matter of getting the number to, to strip off the drywall and such in there, that, that's, I can do that very quickly.
That's what we talked about.
We did talk about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the question was, you know, if you remove the sheet rock, would that give a more drying atmosphere such that the mold wouldn't be generating as much as it is now when it's contained?
Sure.
That was, I think, what we were talking about, and we didn't know the answer to that.
Right. Because we don't know if it's a wood structure or metal studs, if they're wood studs or metal studs, and that's, I think, one of the, it makes a big difference, you know.
It's definitely wood in the living area.
Yeah.
It's, because I've seen it when it's been ripped out before. Unfortunately, I've been here through the 10-year cycle, so I, I've got to see it once already. But I, I'll be happy to get that answer back. My apologies for not recognizing that as a request, sir.
I, I mean, I don't want to, you know, beat on this in the, in the budget hearing, but I, I think it's something that the subcommittee should still work with staff on, you know, some further discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, if you guys want to get together and, and do that, I think that's, that's good. Any other questions for Randy?
Well, this goes back to a conversation we had at the facilities subcommittee, and the fire chief was there. And we were talking about, his, his statement was, we, we want to make sure we don't throw a lot of money into something that we end up not wanting to use anyway. Something to that effect, if I remember correctly. And then the question becomes, you know, do we still want to have a fire station in Brisbane? If so, where? And of course, our political answer was that we suspect that the citizens would sure like to have a fire presence in Brisbane. But it doesn't necessarily have to be at the current location, and that needs to be evaluated. And that's when we got talking about response times and all that sort of thing. So that becomes a part of the evaluation as well. Would you, would you want to talk about that?
I would agree with what you're saying. I, I think part of the issue is how long before we're going to have another site through[1690.01] the Baylands to locate a fire station? And that coincides with, well, do you spend money on a fire station that eventually you don't need, but you're able to live in the fire stations for some period of time? Uh, and as, as Randy was pointing out, some of the analysis is already being done to determine where that location would be for the next fire station, because we've indicated that we wanted more than one fire station, uh, supporting the activities of the development of the Baylands, as well as the, uh, the initial area of Brisbane. And so, I mean, this is all, it's all, all kind of a complicated puzzle in terms of when do you act, and how do you act, and how soon, but, but you're correct in the statement, and it's the dilemma we all have. Do you throw good money at bad, um, at the existing fire station? And I will tell you that as much as we'd like to have a permanent fire station, we are getting by with the temporary fire station, um, the way it is today. So in a sense, you have a temporary fire station providing you with what you had, uh, prior to that, and, um, so, uh, you know, we've told the firefighters, and they have been very good about, uh, realizing that we need to accommodate a temporary fire station until we make the right decision and, and spend the money the correct way, and, and not, and, and, and they, as much as anybody else, don't wanna spend, you know, money that doesn't need to be spent, because it could be very germane to the whole concept of fire protection.
Right.
Um, but I, I just think we gotta keep studying, and I, I don't think any of us have the, the right answer yet, but you're correct, where if we do place another fire station, we look at response times as it relates to the whole community. Um, and it's always, if you move a fire station, some are gonna get better, and some are gonna get different response times, but as a whole, you know, you're gonna have adequate response times wherever you put a fire station, as a general, uh, approach to the community.
And so Randy, um, all this study that will happen, so it's gonna come out in the IR process, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, from that process, we'll get an evaluation of, of what the fire needs, what the safety needs are going to be.
Yes, sir.
And then based on that, um, the council will be able to determine how to, you know, best appropriate...
I, I think you'll have information that'll allow you to make a, a much more informed decision, yes, sir.
Okay.
And just remember that the Baylands is years out there, so...
Yeah, but...
We're not talking two years from now, this isn't...
Yeah, but the analysis, though...
We need, really need to be realistic about it, 'cause we're, you know, this fire station is barely even 20 years old, now it's basically half abandoned, and, and, you know, that's, uh, uh, it's disgusting.
Yeah, no, we're all ticked off about it, you know, but how do we move forward? And, and, but even though the Baylands, yeah, is not gonna be developed for a long time...
That's why I'd like to deal with it on the subcommittee level, that, you know, not...
I agree.
To, uh, discuss it further, that's all.
Yeah, no, I, 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 you know, it's been brought up, and, you know, and, yeah, you know, where's that analysis gonna come from? And it's gonna come from the, the IR. And granted, both you guys are gonna be, uh, you know, working on that as that information is presented, and, you know, I'm sure you'll share it all with the council.
Yeah, if I could add one more thing, you know, under that analysis, we always kind of assumed that there'd be two fire stations, and it could be that that fire station and another fire station would be needed. So, it still kinda boils back down to whether or not the area where the current fire station has to become, has to be removed in order to accommodate the other things that you plan on doing, but, um, you know, uh, we're, we're still gonna, you're still gonna probably have the question about, do you throw some money towards that and amortize it over a period of time, waiting for the Baylands, or do we just assume that we're gonna do it differently, uh, down the road?
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, just, just to give you an idea of, I, I think if you were to look at just the reality of the cost of trying to provide access to the proposed charter high school, my back-of-the-envelope calculations are that it would be cheaper to relocate the fire station, even if you had to move it 150 yards south and rotate it 90 degrees, than it would be to build another bridge over the railroad tracks. So, i- if those are the options that people are starting to come up with, is you're starting to try and analyze those back and forth, and it, it's that sort of analysis. So again, that's, I, I do think, I, you asked me earlier, and I believe that your, the information you're gonna receive with the environmental impact report will inform you of all these matters, and, and will let you make good decisions at that point in time. And, and I recognize it's a little frustrating to have to wait for that process to work its way through, but at the same time, I think you'd be very frustrated with staff if we recommended, you know, a million dollar repair, or a six to eight million dollar rebuild, and we went, oops, we put it in the wrong place, 'cause we should've waited a little longer to get you the information you needed.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, the, even though the, the city's alternative and, and UPC's, uh, plan has the charter school in that location, that, that's, that's not a guarantee, and, you know, a lot of folks in the community aren't real pleased with the site being so close to the tank farm.
Right, exactly.
So, um, yeah.
Yeah, it may turn out to be too hazardous a site, so...
Yeah, it could be a moot point.
So that could all change.
All right, so, um, now we do...
Just one other thing that, that, that's possible, I mean, just thinking in terms of, you know, financing, that just because the Baylands is not gonna be built out for a long time, if we in fact make a development agreement, um, you know, we could make some kind of financing of fire station upfront as part of that, if that we felt was a high priority, right?
I think that's what Clark is kind of...
Absolutely, yes, sir. You could get the land, and you could get the financing, and all those things, or, that, that's what agreements are about, they're two willing parties coming together and finding terms.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, now we do have a member of the, the public who would like to speak on this matter, so Carolyn, why don't you come on up to the podium?
Hiya. Hi, I'm Carolyn Parker, and I live up on the ridge, but I have a question, if we are thinking about relocating the fire department, um, and I don't know how long the fire department wants to stay in, um, these types of buildings, you know, this, um, temporary building, is that possible? We could actually move the fire department somewhere into Crocker Park? I, I think that's kind of an off-the-wall question, but I just wanted to pose it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's what we're kinda all discussing, you know, are there other options out there, and we'll forget that in the analysis.
That wouldn't be a bad location if there was facilities that could accommodate it, but, um, that may be one of the spots that when we look at, that, um, I think we've talked for some time, that that wouldn't have been a bad location for a fire station, anyway. Um, but I don't know that there's facilities or a way to accommodate that, and what the cost and all things would be, but it's not out of the question that, that that would be, uh, it, it's not a bad location, let's put it that way.
So that's one more thing for the subcommittee to look into.
There you go. All right, so, moving on to the next area of the...
Mr. Mayor, may we take a break before we get into the Public Works budget proposal?
Absolutely.
Does that mean the fire's done?
Yeah.
I think so.
Well, I don't know, after we talked about the fire department, you still had something else to say, huh?
No, no, I'm done, I'm good.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right, so let's take a five-minute break.
I've been trying to...
That might not be supported by these, uh, guys.
No, no, the police guy is scary.
Get up like that, go to the fire. Yours came. Is that a, um, you see, that's what I've been trying to make it work.
It's weird.
Yeah, mine doesn't come on.
83 kilobytes. It's weird, it's weird, it's happy, I don't know, maybe it got, maybe it got corrupted.
Look at the other one, trying to break off of the deficit.
Yeah, that, that, that works.
Stuart, did you see how strange? His comes on, but mine doesn't, look at it. I've been trying to make that, that comes on, police come.
Thanks, Mary Ann, and Chiefs.
Right.
Have a good night, good job.
This comes on.
Yeah, mine, mine works.
Yeah.
You know what I would do? I would turn it off and turn it back on.
Okay.
Yeah, you haven't turned it off in a while.
There are two of the files left there. They break out, and...
They're all in the same...
I know, that's what I'm, I'm telling you, I've been trying to make this work.
Shut it down and turn it back on.
No, 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 but I, that's what I was asking you to see if his works.
Yeah, mine works fine.
Thank you, don't worry. That's what I've been trying to do all along, to get this, they, they had not given it to us, I asked them to email it a few minutes ago.
Oh, yeah.
Mine doesn't come on. Nope. Nope. I went to the garden, and right outside the garden, to the north end of it, there are people who have, people who have planted grapevines. And the leaves are outside the fence. So it's not stealing if I go pick up the grape leaves from there, yes! Yeah, so I can, oh, I, that's exactly what I eat. Oh, man, tortilla bread is my staple food. Yeah, you have something? You should've told me, I should've gotten that. I made some plans about, no, no, that wasn't dinner, that was a sample. But, yeah, it's fine though, his, uh, Clark's comes on, but mine doesn't, and I, yeah, his came on.
My, I can't on mine either, so I think it was just a recent email that he sent to you, so...
Oh, really?
Oh, no, but he just sent a separate email to you. I, I'm gonna change what happened to the council distribution list.
Yeah.
Doesn't have your Seppie Richardson at Gmail, so I...
Because I never got his, uh, email.
Yeah, 'cause, so I'm gonna, tomorrow I'm gonna add Seppie Richardson at Gmail to that, so you would get it.
Okay, okay.
Um, that email, apparently everybody's able to open it, but on this one, we're thinking it's a bad connection, so we'll resend it.
Okay. Okay. Oh, gosh. Hi, how are you? Hi. 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 I just wanna make it clear that I'm doing about the health care thing, when I said that it'd be hard to make it beyond the council, but I didn't mean that, but it doesn't mean that I'm worried about the cost of helping.
I presumed that.
Well, I mean, you, you know, your wife made that comment, so I just...
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't believe it.
I presume that.
Well, I mean, you, you know, your wife made that comment, so I just...
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't believe it.
I presume that.
Well, I mean, you, you know, your wife made that comment, so I just...
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, welcome back, everybody. Okay, so, item number two, Department Review, Public Works Department.
We can, um, save a little bit of time on the city attorney, um, and, well, a little bit of, yeah, a little bit of money, and, um, a lot of his sanity, um, by, uh, if we could jump ahead to the council, um, let's see, what, what section in the budget, the mayor and council matters, which is the, uh, item B.
Sure, yeah, let's do that.
Get that done real quick, hopefully, and, or as quick as, as fast as we can.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so, um, this is the, um, staff report with regards to a citizens committee to review the draft environmental impact report for the, uh, Brisbane Baylands project. Um, I believe first came up at your goal-setting session earlier this year, but it's also come up subsequent to that, and the idea was to, uh, put together a committee of, um, citizens, um, in Brisbane, um, that have also been like former city employees, um, and former city council people, and maybe people who've worked on the planning commission, people who have been involved with draft environmental impact reports in the past, and have kind of a expertise to, uh, to lend to the process. Um, to form them into a, uh, committee, they, um, staff would provide some support to them, um, and they would, uh, be a kind of an advisory, uh, body to the city council through the, uh, the draft EIR process.
You mean those that are willing to serve?
Um, yes, this would not...
[laughing]
Well, it would be non-paid and have to be willing, yes.
Okay. And, and how many people, uh, do you think would be on this?
I, I think whatever number, or, uh, my thought would be that the council simply had, um, um, identify people you thought might be, fit into that category and be, uh, good candidates, let the staff know, um, and then we can contact them, and, and frankly, as many people as we get, uh, all, all the better.
Okay, and, um, would they, would there be a subcommittee that would work with, uh, the council that would work?
No, no, 'cause you, you don't wanna be involved with it at this point.
Uh-huh, all right.
And, and the other point, I, I think you should just, the instructions should be that they look at the EIR using their expertise and simply make comments. What you don't want is to create an advisory group that all of a sudden is gonna trigger all of the Brown Act compliance requirements, so they can set their own meetings, they don't have to worry about posting agendas and all of that thing, and if they're not they can set their own meetings, they don't have to worry about posting agendas and all of that thing, and if they're not in the decision-making loop, but simply in the input loop of giving you information and comments, I think that was really the concern the council had.
They'd be giving this information to the planning commission then, because they're the ones that's collecting the data, right?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, so, um, any other questions for staff regarding this committee?
Seems like a good idea. You know, there are some people in town who have a lot of expertise.
Mike isn't on. Uh, it seems like it's a good idea, and there are a number of people in town, I think we mentioned last time, like, for instance, the former planning director Carol Nelson, who knows a heck of a lot about EIRs, uh, would be really, if, in some kind of organized way, we could get people like her to, to make comments, uh, would be really helpful to the process. I think it's a good idea, and the way you suggest doing it and how's, you know, a clear instruction that, you know, they're, they're not making, you know, recommendations, that's actually just making comments. And then we can all, you know, submit people, and the staff could contact them and see who's interested, you know? Seems fine to me, I, I would move approval.
Second?
All right. All right, uh, let me just, so, we as individual council members would give staff the names of these individuals, and staff would reach out to these people. As a council body, would we approve of these people being on this committee, or are we just, just?
Depends on how formal you want to get with it.
Yeah.
I mean, you, I don't think you'd have to, I could, if, if you gave me a, a list of people you're individually thinking of, I can, um, then circulate that around to the, to the group, and, you know, if there's concerns.
Oh, I bet you it'd be dupil- duplicitating.
It, it seems that it takes out some of the citizens committee if the council is handpicking the people to be on this committee. If it were.
There'd be open, open invitation.
Open to the public to want to participate, I think that would remove the council from insinuating that we have an agenda we're trying to look at.
Hmm, okay.
I, I think that that would make it a more open process, and, um, I don't think that the council would want to be in the position of deciding who's appropriate to be on the committee.
Right.
If it's a citizens committee, but, and I, I'm not quite sure how this would work, because I, um, you know, hadn't heard what this really was intended to be.
I, I think you could take a two-pronged approach, is, is we can give names of, of, of people who we've worked with, or, or citizens that we feel could add value and come up with good comments, and at the same time, uh, request for volunteers.
Mm-hmm.
And then staff can ca- contact people who we put down as a list, I mean, after all, we are community leaders, we're elected officials, so.
No, I agree.
Yeah, and it's not trying to influence it, it's just tr- trying to get data, is really what it is, I mean, you know, but all these people have to be willing, so.
Of course.
Uh, if we just put it out and don't ask people, we may not get very many volunteers, you know what I mean? And it.
Or we may get way too many, it, it just, you know.
Well, I mean, that's, that's okay too, I mean, you know, it, it's not something that we're gonna moderate.
Mm-hmm, right.
I mean, really, it's gonna be whatever, you know, if I understand things correctly, it's gonna be the, here it is.
Yeah, I mean.
Here's a pocket, fill it up.
Right, staff's not gonna try to, you know, play any particularly directing role in this either, other than just being a resource to them. Now, o- one, one thought might be that we just simply put together a list of all former city council members, and all former planning commissioners, and all former planning directors, I guess, that live in town.
Right.
Um, and we'd send out a letter.
Yeah, sure.
Now, now you're, now you're talking, Cliff.
That's exactly what I was.
They, they put in, um, that type of, uh, that type of time of, of, of having, uh, you know, dealing with EIRs, dealing with, uh, you know, these types of documents.
There's also the group that, uh, the, the group that.
The CAG.
Ca- and ca-.
BB CAG.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
CAG's gonna do their own review.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but the, the group then, or, uh, on you, all of you, you, you go attend sometimes?
BB CAG.
Is that the one?
BB CAG, uh, Brisbane.
Yeah, and they're, they're gonna, they, they will be making their own independent comments, although more focused on the soils issues.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, that's a good body to, to, and see what happens when it comes back, I mean, if, uh, if you're not getting anybody.
I'll still provide you a, a copy of everybody, just in case we miss somebody.
Yes.
Sure.
That would.
You can let us know.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
And to, and to the people that are out there watching in TV land, um, who might be interested in serving on this, um, is, or would we just want ex-officials?
I think we should be open, myself.
I think it's open, an open process.
Okay.
If, uh, so, basically, anybody else who approaches us, independent of former officials, would, uh, be included also?
I would think so, I, I, I would hate to limit someone who is willing to participate, um, limit their ability to, to be part of the group if they'd like to be.
I agree, you let, you know, people will limit themselves, so to speak, it's those, you know, it's the committee of the willing, as you said right from the beginning.
I mean, I.
People have that much interest and really want to, you know, spend the time and, and make a contribution, uh, fine.
I guess the other question then is, would we want to advertise for that?
I was going to say, do we need to put it on the board and give it a week and see who applies?
Well, I mean, eh.
Well, we have the blog too, and, and, you know, our new, our newsletter is going out when?
That's too late for that.
That's already kind of.
It's already done, uh.
I mean, we have various ways.
Well, for a month, I mean, do you, are we expecting to get this committee up and running and full bore in two weeks, three weeks, are we on that kind of timeframe?
July would still be timely.
Yeah, I mean, enough, give them time to participate in the.
Training.
Secret training.
So, a lot of them won't need it.
No.
No, I, I guess, I'm getting a sense.
There's always.
Want to advertise.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should put it out there, I mean.
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't think there's any wrong, thing wrong with, with letting people know about things.
Sure.
Okay.
I agree, I mean, it's, absolutely.
I agree.
After all, all those people who've served already may think, I've had enough.
Aren't they just knocking down the door to serve again?
I'm willing to bet, there's quite a few out there that'll say, thanks, but no thanks, you've had enough, good luck.
Okay, so, that's clear, Cliff?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, all right, so you have a motion and a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, Hal.
All right, now we'll go back to budget review, Public Works Department, Randy?
Nothing would please me more, sir. Let, make sure the screens come up, so here we go, twenty twelve thirteen, Budget Works, um, for Public Works, probably appropriate that it's in black, this is, these are kind of somber times, so here's, uh, the budget summary, as you can tell by the title on it. A, a couple of interesting points for you here, as I mentioned, although I, I apologize, I'm not sure why that is not showing, uh, the total very well at the bottom of that screen. So, a, a couple of notes here, as I mentioned earlier, there are eleven departments that I'm responsible for. The first, one, two, three, four, five, six of them are all general fund budgets, and then the NIPDs, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, is also a general fund budget, so that's seven of them, and I know the council understands the distinction between general fund and enterprise, but I'm not sure that everyone in TV land necessarily will be. One point I'd like to make on here, uh, out of a couple, is that you look at administration, it's interesting to see in there that there are five employees in there, but overall, the cost is actually relatively low for the percentage of a budget, I don't think that, that's common in most places, that you would see your administration be so low, so I think that's a good thing. Another interesting point, though, that I want to bring to your attention, and we'll talk to you later, is that as you look at the percent of budget for those general fund accounts, you see that they are all single-digit percentages. That means it's a small dollar amount, and so that creates a real challenge for me as we go into the percentage of cuts, and you'll see what that means as, as we move forward into that.
Could, could I ask a question about that?
Sure, happy to take it, sir.
Go back to the list, yeah, just that, yeah. Sierra Point Lighting and Landscape?
Yes.
That's a general fund?
No, sir, that is not, that is an enterprise fund.
It's an enterprise.
Yes, sir, it is, that, that is an enterprise fund.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't say that it was, um, general fund.
No, I, I did not, but I, somehow, because of the way the slides are organized, it, I, I got a enterprise fund mixed in there with the general funds, so, which.
Well, you said the first six were general fund.
And then NIPDs, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
Yes, sir. So, this just kind of talks about the percentage of budget and stuff, and again, you can see that, you know, overall, the cost of our salaries and the benefits in, in Public Works is relatively low, it's thirty-five percent, I think, if you're out in the business world, you realize it's usually the reverse, usually you see that two-thirds of your costs are employees, and the other, and the other third is the cost of the actual services and the things you're doing. Part of that is not because we're managing the department in, in exceptional fashion, the reality is that we spend a lot of money, percentage-wise, relative to the total budget, purchasing water from San Francisco PUC and the cost we pay for treating the wastewater, so that's really what drives that more than anything else. Uh, here's the budget summary again for administration, as I mentioned earlier, there are five employees in there. Now, all of the employees in there, except for one, have their salaries spread across other departments. So, we've, and we'll talk later about the cuts that have happened, particularly in the general funds, so everybody's servicing other departments, and one employee services every department, it's my administrative assistant, so she provides service to all of the general fund departments, and also to the enterprise fund departments. Uh, streets in summary, this, or streets and storm drain, this is an interesting dilemma here, the, the slide itself doesn't really show the picture. There is not a maintenance worker assigned to this department. There is no body in orange on the street. The reason you see salaries in there is that a portion of one engineer, the senior civil engineer, has been assigned in here because it's her responsibility to manage the contract pavement repairs that we do, and the one to two contracts that we do for pavement maintenance, to manage all of our Measure A, gas tax-type money, and to also be responsible for managing the street sweeping contract. Additionally, a small percentage of our one remaining utility engineer is assigned here, because he's responsible for the storm drain systems. So, that's why you see salaries in there, but you don't get any boots on the ground, if you will, out of this department. Uh, buildings and grounds, there's just one person in here, that's what you're gonna find with so many of my departments, they're, they are a department of one. It's interesting to kind of look at the, the balance of services and supplies, you see oftentimes that they're either just barely the same amount, or perhaps slightly less. Again, that will be a challenge as we, as we move forward, and we start to talk about doing cuts. Again, park maintenance, one employee, you see really not a lot of services and supplies monies in there, this is the person that takes care of all the parks-related facilities, it does, uh, the maintenance of the pool equipment and such. Landscape maintenance, this is, um, our turf and landscape team, one employee, used to be two employees. When we first, I think when I first got here, we were doing this under contract about eleven years ago, and at that point in time, the council made a decision, actually, a knowing decision to spend a little more money by hiring our own people, because we recognized at the time, um, it seemed to me that was when soccer was really starting to take off, at least perhaps in only in my world, you know, eleven years ago, but we were getting a lot of complaints from the local soccer communities, our fields were in terrible condition, uh, and there were repeated appearances before the council, so the council at that point in time made a decision to hire its own turf and landscape team, which gave us the flexibility to really move people that you don't have with contractors, and say, okay, go out and take care of this now, uh, the fields have come up, uh, quite a bit. When we lost an employee, we brought this team down to one, and I think everybody is starting to notice that, you know, the annual color that we put out there doesn't show up as frequently, you're seeing the grass getting a little longer, you're seeing that we're not doing, uh, the edging and stuff that we'd like to do, I don't think we're at a critical point yet, but with, if you were to have less than one employee, that, it would be really challenging, um, to continue that. Uh, Sierra Point Lighting and Landscaping, as a couple of you have pointed out, this is clearly an enterprise fund, it's, it's paid for by the property owners out at Sierra Point, it's one maintenance worker, and we have, uh, partial salaries for one engineer, because again, you have a district engineer out there, you'll recall that just a couple of weeks ago, you appointed the district engineer to do the annual report, that's not a big portion of, of that engineer's assignment, but it is, it does take up some time for them, particularly this time of year. Um, here's water, that, that's obviously why I mentioned, it's, it's one of the, it's one of the bigger departments, under services and supplies is where we pay for the water, so that's why it's such a big part of that department. The GVMID, this is an enterprise fund that, that we put under utility, but we also pay for streets under here, we pay for storm drains of GVMID, sewer and water, the street lighting, all rolled under GVMID, so that helps you explain, um, a little bit why it's, it's, it's certainly a slightly bigger department than water, uh, but noticeably bigger if you consider the fact that you've got less than five hundred people living within the boundaries of GVMID, and you've got fifteen hundred people living in the central part of Brisbane, so, gives you just a comparison point. Uh, NIPDs, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, there's a partial employee in there, there are three partial employees actually in there, there's a partial employee for engineering, which is me, because my last, uh, engineer in there was, um, very kindly hired by C CAG. Um, there is a admin person in there to do our administration and do the annual reports that we have, and there's also a person in there that does the inspections of all the open sites. And those are all partial salaries, there's no one body in there. Sewer, pretty straightforward as to what sewer does. EOC, um, in here, you, you can see that the salary and the benefits number is pretty low, that's because we're paying for twenty percent of a full-time employee, um, and I, I guess I should take off on, on the kudos that Firegat earlier, because this is the department that's really responsible for providing the training to all of the non-public safety responders, and for ensuring that departments are integrated across the board. Uh, this department has probably only been around oh-five, oh-six too, sounds about right. It, the, the council made a decision back then that this was something we needed to do, it actually served its purpose on a number of occasions, one of them was undoubtedly when we had to close Station eighty-one, and we had to move the EOC to the, to the room directly over your heads, that, that was a multi-month process um, that this twenty percent full-time employee was doing much more than twenty percent on. So, here are the items, uh, we were asked to talk about for council discussion, travel and training, that dollar amount comes out of, uh, forty oh-one, it comes out of my admin department, uh, the visitation tree trimming comes out of forty oh-two, which is streets. Travel and training, we, I haven't spent nearly that amount of money, uh, for several years now, and I'm not sure that we ever did expense that full amount. As the economy started to get worse, we made intentional decisions to never travel out of state, and we tried to be, um, very selective about which things we did to go to, for instance, when the American Water Works Association was in town, in San Francisco a couple of years ago, I took out a, a two-day, uh, conference fee, and then passed my ID to the water engineer, and then he passed that ID along to one of the utility workers, so rather than sending three people, we bought one membership and multiple people went on different days, that's the type of things we've been doing to try and really keep our spending in control. I would request that I have sixteen hundred put back into the travel and training, and the reason, perhaps seems somewhat selfish, the only reason I'm asking it is that I think many of you are aware that I'm presently the president of the League of California Cities Public Works Department, um, I will be ending that this year, however, with that organization, there are many past president duties, so I've got a year where it's going to be expected that if I'm gonna continue to participate in the organization, that there are two conferences that I would attend, the Public Works Institute, and then the annual convention that the league holds, so that's why I would ask for that amount. The visitation tree trimming, I, I think, frankly, that is something we could do without, this is one of the items that I've talked to multiple councils over multiple years, is that if there's something you're gonna let go, um, decorative aesthetic trimming is probably not a bad thing, it doesn't leave the streets looking pristine, but it doesn't cause hazards, it doesn't cause danger, so just to doing the trimming to keep them looking, uh, in an appropriate shape is something I would probably let go.
You think this would be in every other year?
I'm sorry, sir?
You think this would be in every other year?
When it was originally put into the budget, it was intended to be done every year, it was intended to be an annual evolution.
You didn't even get by with every other year, I mean, there's gonna be.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, I could probably get by on a triennial basis, or, I think we could do it on a three-year basis. I'm sorry, was there a question, yes, sir?
I'm, I'm good with your recommendation, Randy, uh, on the travel and training, and, and certainly the visitation tree trimming, but I have a question, I think I've asked this probably through the years, um, not recently, but, um, those trees on visitation are getting large.
Yeah, the ash, they certainly are, yeah, yes, sir.
And I was wondering, uh, what you would recommend as far as from, you know, before these really start lifting up the sidewalk and doing some, some other damage, what you would think for, uh, replacement program, and how would you logistically work that out? You know, would you go in and just whack them all down and?
Oh, God, no.
Do it, you know, periodically, and you wouldn't have to trim them at all for a while, and then.
Yeah, you know, sir, I'm, I'm kind of, uh, an odd civil engineer from, uh, many of my colleagues' perspective, because I like trees better than I like concrete, so it really kind of breaks our heart when we have to take trees down, but unfortunately, the knowledge that we have today about how much room, particularly under the ground, that a growing tree needs, so it's not going to preferentially rise up to the surface to try and get nutrients and water, has changed drastically in thirty to forty years, and so that's a problem we're experiencing with all of our large-growth trees, is that they just get too big, they weren't designed with the engineered structural soil that we use now, they weren't designed with enough volume or cubic area underneath to really want those tree roots to grow down. So, yes, I, I think that unfortunately those trees will eventually outgrow their space, um, I, I don't think we need to be, build big bulbous or anything like that, there, there's a way to get them in the ground. I, I think before we do any of that, we ought to have a conversation, and certainly take the guidance from the council on how you want to do it, about what we want to have back there. Um, there, there's always, um, a group of people who say they ought to all look the same, and then there are other people, arborists, who will typically say, and, and some people who are just, who are laypeople, who say, well, I want them to look different, some of the reasons you want them to look different, and, and it's what I, it's what I recommend as well, is that if you got the same type of tree out there, you run into the problem like we had out at the Marina, where we had all the, the myoporum's, we had that thrip that comes through and insects it, and it killed them, kill them all, so if you've get, if you have the same species of tree in that area, and you get any insect, or you get any climate change, or anything that's back in the tree, you lose all your trees at once, so then it looks like a desert, so, but I think the first thing we need to think about is, what sort of tree palette would we want there, and then I think that a, uh, a slow program of replacing them, and I, and when I say slow, I mean no more than twenty to thirty percent a year. So, you pop twenty percent out, you put the new smaller trees in place, you, you give them, you know, you let them get settled, and you do it slowly but surely, in that fashion.
Well, I know, um, it just, one of the things is you wanted trees that were, what, what's the term, deciduous?
Deciduous, yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah.
There's deciduous and evergreen, so the deciduous are the ones that, that drop.
Drop the, their fruit, or whatever it is that they drop, and then, then they stay green year-round, and I, I think that certainly probably lowers maintenance costs from street sweeping and stuff, at least the amount of debris, you know, but, uh, I guess that, that's probably a conversation for another time.
And that's, and, and those are just more complicating factors, you're actually right, because I, I mean, I mean, you're absolutely right, not actually, because certainly with our deciduous fruit-bearing type trees, they're messy. So, we try not to put them over hardscape areas where people are walking, not only because they're messy, but because they create fall hazards, you know, people step on a, you know, a little cherry nut, and phew, they end up on their back, that's not what you're trying to do, but then on the other hand, there is something beautiful about a blooming. But then on the other hand, there is something beautiful about a blooming deciduous tree in the spring. I mean, they look fabulous. And, but on the other hand, there's something nice about having evergreens here that kind of, give you some sort of green all year-round, so it's not, it doesn't look like my home in New England, where you would have, you know, an entire row of maple trees for miles, and man, when the colors change, it looks fabulous. But when they fall, you've just got sticks hanging up in the air. And that, so it's probably not what you want for your hometown. I agree. It's a conversation that needs to be held, and I think we need to have an arborist, somebody who's a professional, who does, for letting a landscape person consult for us on the matter and offer some opinions, look at the approved street tree lists and such that we have.
And that's probably something for one of our commissions or committees--
I think we talked about changing that responsibility from the Parks and Recreation Commission to the Open Space and Ecology. We even passed a motion to that effect. That's a part of the process of setting up some kind of basic rules and procedures for committees and commissions, and that was a part of that discussion, I think.
Right.
And I think we set up a subcommittee that really hasn't pursued it yet, as I recall. Subcommittee was two or less, I think. Yeah, so that's underway. But I think clearly, the conversation that you all are just having is something that, you know, the Open Space and Ecology would be delighted to have and come up with some recommendations. The original decision for the trees that are there now was made by a beautification subcommittee of the city council, which I remember very well.
Sure.
And Clark will remember that, you know, originally, there were a lot of nice diverse trees on visitation, and the merchants complained that it hid their signs, so they cut them all down. And then we had nothing there for a while, and maybe the police people will remember that. And then they decided, in the beautification period, that we needed to get the trees back. And so we developed a street tree plan. But there was this big debate, and it's a very interesting one, about whether you want to have the same kind of tree or whether you want to have diversity.
Yes, sir.
In that particular time, the beautification thought that one kind of tree was better. But that's an open question, I think.
Yes, sir. Okay. Do I need to stop here? Does the council need to have any more discussion about these items here?
Yeah, lots of things.
Okay.
I have one question, if I may.
Sure.
On your budget slides that you had, and you were commenting on the low salary in the departments--
Right, the total, as a percentage, yeah.
As a percentage.
Yes, ma'am.
The, and, but you have your city overhead that's down there at the bottom, and a couple of them is, one's $1 million.
Sure, there's some big numbers there.
And $300,000 and $241,000. And that really includes salaries.
Not of the public works employees, in general. I think Stu's going to make a clarification that it may include a piece-me, but in general, overhead is not people in those departments. It's, go ahead, Stu.
Right, I mean, city overhead is the cost that we, city council back in 2002, 2003, did a citywide study to determine the cost of providing services. One of those aspects was, I can't remember the group that did it, Clay, FCS?
FCSG.
FCS?
FCSG.
FCS? Hmm? Okay. Came through and did a citywide study, determined a method for breaking out the city administrative departments, the city attorney, and said that a portion of those should be charged off to all of the non-administrative departments. They did that and included in the city overhead in public works is the administration, administrative portion of the public works department, because the administrative is, we don't charge a little bit of Randy to each of the individual portions, but obviously, a bit of him is used in each of those. So that's where the city overhead cost comes from. It was done by, at the request of a study by the city council back in, I think it was 2001, 2002, 2002, 2003.
But, but the--
And it is, I mean, it's, but it's not just the salary, it's also some of the supplies and services cost. But you're right, that is the portion of, portion of me, portion of Clay, portion of the city council that's spread throughout. And as you, as you know, as you're right, they are, you know, and salaries and benefits and insurance and all that gets spread out amongst all those departments.
Okay, I just wanted people to be aware that, you know, when we're looking at salaries and people costs, that some of them are sort of harder to see. So, but they're there.
All those are captured in the individual departments where they're charged. These are not, these are not a second charge of those people. What happens is this gets charged out to those departments that are non-general fund departments, and then the indirect cost reimbursement, which is in the revenues, it's a revenue source back into the general fund. So we're not showing, we show all of Clay within the city manager's office, and then we get reimbursement from all those departments that are non-general departments for the portion that he served, he works in all those different areas.
Thank you.
Isn't budgeting fun, ma'am? So were we still stopping?
I think we're finding that out even more when you go to water and sewer.
Right.
That this is something that we went through in detail a couple of years ago, and so it's pretty interesting on how it all works and functions, ties together.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say that, following up on Terry's comment, that one of the difficulties that at least someone like myself has in looking through the budget document is dealing with exactly these kind of transfers in and out, and it's not always clear exactly. When you're just looking at public works, you know, it says just indirect costs, it's a million dollars, and, but there's no page on where that comes from. And so there's a kind of a missing bit of information there. And the other thing that Randy brought up to begin with, and that also struck me, is that, on the one hand, we recognize that there are some portions of public works come totally out of general fund, and there are other portions of public works that are funded through revenues coming from enterprise funds and so forth. And yet it's all, in the overall total budget, it's all mushed together. And that becomes a little, for me anyway, a little difficult to follow. Would be helpful to me at some point, it's different ways of looking at the same ball of wax, I understand that, but it would be helpful to me to see, okay, so what is it of public works that really is, you know, exclusively funded from the general fund and therefore, you know, that's--
Right. Right, on page--
And then the other thing is, when you get to the enterprise funds, the water and sewer, you know, not everything that one could charge the water and sewer, of which the rates are based on, is here in the public works budget. Am I right about that?
Everything for water and sewer is in the public works budget.
Yeah, but not all the things that are covered by the water and sewer rates. Because isn't a certain percentage, and that's where--
There's a bond issue that is not.
Right?
There's a bond issue that's not charged there.
Okay.
What else did you think was not in there, sir?
Well, the indirect costs, part of you must be there, right?
Right, and that's reflected in the indirect costs.
Those are in there.
And that's what's not spelled out, that's--
Right, and we can add a chart that shows how the indirect costs are captured for each of the individual divisions.
And I don't know how far we're going to get to really satisfying pulling each of those out for you, sir, because that really is part of the big question with indirect costs, because it's fundamentally a matter of how are you going to manage your budgets?
Right.
And water, like we're talking about right now, is a great example. If you were going to run a water district, you would most likely, and just a water district, standalone water district, you would have a general manager, you would have legal counsel, you would have a board of directors, you would have accounting, you would have accounts receivable, accounts payable, you would have all those people. I don't have any of those people in any of my utility budgets. So those services are all provided by people in what we refer to as the front end of the building.
Right.
But, so somehow, those people's costs have to be paid for--
Right.
So they can be captured. So I think I'll leave that to my colleague Stuart to see how he could--
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
--tweak it out.
I mean, that's, that's not the issue. The issue is the presentation of it, so it's clear to see, that's all. And Clark was talking about this earlier when we were talking about different, that conversation was about recreation, but in terms of particular things that are provided, it's important to know, so what is it that's actually covered entirely by revenue that's generated by fees and so forth, and what is it that's not? And it's, the budget is not always set up that way, so it's easy to identify those differences. I guess that's what I'm saying. And it would be helpful in the decision-making process to be able to differentiate between, you know, putting it all together in one big ball of wax and then separating out those things which clearly are general fund from those which are paying for themselves, or a certain percentage of them are paid significantly from fees. And so it would be interesting to have that perspective, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right, so on page 50 of the budget, where we have Schedule 4, it shows which areas are general fund, and it breaks it out by fund. So, and page 50, you would see those that were strictly the general fund items, and then which ones are the other funds. As Randy talked about, you know, you had Niptes, which has a general fund, a transfer from the general fund, and the transfers are shown on page 52. And for instance, the public works, parks maintenance is shown under the Parks and Recreation Enterprise Fund on page 51. So we try and show it in different ways and different areas.
Right, I mean, I agree that it's here. I'm just talking about trying to follow it and coordinating back and forth across the different budget categories, so it's just a question of presentation, so it's clear, you know, what's being--
Right, and I think if you get to Randy's next slide, it'll talk a little bit to what you're talking about. And then next week, as we talk about parks and recreation, we break it out by division, by cost and by revenue that that division creates. But I believe it's your next slide that does that, or is it the slide after?
I'm getting close, I'm getting close.
Right, we did put that slide together for this presentation.
Okay, great.
Because, and as always, I seem to be the thorn. It's not just here, sir, trust me, it's at every department head meeting too, or because I have so many of these departments, because I have four out of the 11 that are enterprise and seven that aren't, we have a lot of robust conversations--
Right.
--about how we deal with these things. And one of the conversations we try and have, and what you will not see in my presentation is this suite of reductions applied to the enterprise funds. Because you're looking at a general fund deficiency, and--
Right.
--the reality is, and I'm sure you understand this, the reality is, is that you can reduce your enterprise fund--
Right.
--which means you probably have to reduce the fees you're charging. But what it also means is you reduce the overhead that you're charging--
Right.
--back to your general funds. You actually hurt your general fund by reducing your enterprise funds.
Exactly, yeah. That's why it's important to separate them out.
Right.
That's one of the points I'm making. And it's here, I mean, it's not that it isn't here, it's just that having difficulty coordinating it all to make sure, okay, so what is it that really is covered by fees? And what is it that's general fund? And mushing it all together, for me, is a disadvantage.
Sir, I think Stu and I would be happy to sit down with you at your convenience if there's, and talk about some better way to present it, if it'd be more helpful for you as you're trying to wrestle with these challenges.
Philosophical question. How late does the council wish to run tonight? We're on 10. And we have chief of police and still some other matters to talk about, so--
Sir, I've got 10 slides that I could go through nearly as quickly or as slowly as you'd like, I can--
I think it's more up to us than--
Yeah.
You want to go 11:30?
Okay, we'll just do a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so sir, so here's the next slide that Stuart was talking about, the public works budget by fund, and he knew this, because I think he prepared most of these slides as background for us. So there you have the majority of the general fund budgets, you have the parks and rec, which comes out of a general fund, Sierra Point Lighting and Landscaping, of course, an enterprise fund. The Niptes fund is a fund by itself, but it's actually a general fund department, and then my utilities, which are all enterprise. Then as you go together, you start to see what the summary of my general fund looked like. You'll remember if we went back many slides ago, the total department is 6.2 million, but when you just get to the general fund, it's 1.6. So we're going to start going into the conversation about cuts here, but, and I've given you some sort of forewarning in advance about the challenges we're going to have, particularly because these general fund budgets had single digits. One of the other ones I need to give you is that this department has already experienced a 40% cut in employees over the last two to three years. We lost three people out of the maintenance side of the house, and we lost two engineers. So we're pretty thin at this stage in time. And the reality is, is that every remaining employee assists multiple departments. Even the turf and landscape guy assists multiple departments. We're shop and labor back and forth. So if you start to ask me detailed questions, I'm not going to attempt to be evasive, but I'm going to tell you that sometimes it's very difficult to answer those questions, because losing one person here means I'm not going to provide some support over here. So it's not just a matter of this department is down and is out of person. I guess that, considering how many employees we've already lost, and I understand the construct that you've created, that you're just saying, we want to understand what a 10, 20, 30, 40% cut across the board would be. And I get that, and I'm not here trying to promote it or not promote it for you. But every one of those levels, a 10% cut requires the department, these general funds, to lose two employees. 20 another two, 30 another two, 40 another two, and we're all gone at 40%. Everybody's gone. And I know you all count to eight, of course, and you remember a couple of weeks ago, we had a public works week proclamation, and you had two rows back here filled. That's every one of those employees goes away at 40%. So that's kind of the end of the story. And I know that's not where you want to go, but that's just the reality of what happens there. The problem for my department in particular, for my general fund departments, is that if I'm operating under the paradigm that we want to continue to have these departments work, I can't ever do anything that, even in the worst case, I can't give you a 40% cut and have that department work. What I have to do is I have to go to something that looks more like a 60% cut, and I have to lose every employee, because then what happens is that overage that I've gone into by losing those salaries leaves you, because I won't be here at 40%, it leaves you enough money left over so that you've got a 20% buffer, and you can decide how to use that money under contracts, because that's what you would be. You would be a contract service for all of your maintenance, for your streets, your parks, your turf and landscape, all of that would be done. And for those departments, for instance, that now have one employee, what you would have is instead of having that person available for 2,080 hours a year, you would have enough money left over to hire a contractor. You know, a typical contractor working at 25 bucks an hour with a 30% markup overhead for their company, you'd have them for somewhere between 500 to 700 hours a year. And then you would look at, well, how many services and supplies do we have in that department? How much money do we have? And again, I use turf and landscape, because to me, that's the real easy one. Turf and landscape's $160,000 department. You get a lot of savings by losing an employee in there. So you take out $100,000. Now, that 60,000 you've got left is what you've been using to buy seed and plant material and to buy piping and such for the department. So in that case, in that very worst-case scenario, that's just a theoretical conversation, you decide, well, how much of that do I want to spend or not? And then, because we've got that overage money, you decide, okay, well, do we want to have a person, a part-timer for 500 hours a year, 700 hours a year? But that's what you're left with. That's the kind of situation you get to. So having said that, and I know you want to hear from the chief too, because she's probably got more interesting things to say than I do, I could go through what each of those levels of cuts would mean to me, and sort of where I've got it programmed out, but none of them are good. You know, they're all at the point, as I started this conversation with you just a few minutes ago, the department's already lost 40% of its staff. So any 10% increment just means another two bodies that have to be lost and that we have to then perform services under contract with. So it's, I'll leave it to the council's pleasure, I'm happy to go through these. Like I said, I think I have eight, I have eight slides that it would take to go through that evolution, if you'd like.
Personally, I don't need to see it. I know what it means, and, you know, I understand maintenance function better than I do anything else. So for me, I don't--
Sir.
But I'm one person.
Yeah, well, my view is that to me, the most important distinction is between what you're costing the general fund and what's being handled by enterprise funds. And that's, you know, got that here in the slides.
Yes, sir. Right. And this would not help inform that anymore because all we talked about here is general fund. You're absolutely right, yes, sir.
But I do have a number of specific...
Questions in the budget?
Different departments.
Oh, sure.
Where things have been zeroed out that we really haven't talked about.
Yes, sir. Whatever the council's pleasure is, folks, I'm here.
That's what I would like to...
You know, Randy, now Ted's going to be leaving. Is Ted in your department? He's not. He's...
Not, the Marine is not in my department yet, sir.
Ted's a department head, just like Randy.
All right. So you're saying, Ray, that you don't need to see the slides, you just want to go to your questions or should we just go through them? We can go through them fairly quick.
I mean, if he wants to go through fast, but I don't need any...
You put them together, just run them and if there's any questions...
Happy to do it, sir. Sure.
May I suggest something? Ray might have some questions that I think we should just ask, let him ask his questions and, because I'm familiar with what's going on with this. Clark is.
Yeah.
And maybe Terry has her own questions and maybe we can go through...
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Miller's questions were specific to budget line items, not to this presentation, so I, I'll do whatever the council asked me to do.
Yeah, I'd like to hear your questions.
Okay. Fine with that. Ray, go ahead.
Okay. So I just have some things that I wanted clarified and the travel and training, I think we've now agreed...
You say what page you're on?
I'm on page 109.
And in my deepest apologies, I don't have the exact same budget you have that's numbered. So if you could tell me what department we're in and what account we're looking at, that would be really helpful to me. It's just...
Okay, so we're, you know, I'm just going down in order, starting with Administration. Ray?
4,001, Department 4,001.
Sir, I'm getting some help over here, so I may be able to get those numbers. If you just give us the pager numbers, Betsy will move my lips to it.
Page 108?
Yeah.
108. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
108, 109. 52 to 43, which is the last line item. That's Department 4,001.
Yeah.
You're talking about travel and training?
Right. So you made a recommendation on travel and training, which was?
1,600.
Okay. Instead of 4,800 and 45.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, so that's, those are the kind of things I'm trying to... Underground Service Alert, which is right up above there?
Yes, sir.
We don't need that anymore?
We moved that to Streets.
Okay. 111, Safety Clothing. Why is that zeroed out?
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't hear you. Which one was that?
Page 111.
Department 4,001.
I don't have an employee there, sir.
No, no, no. See, the item is Safety Clothing?
Yes, sir. I don't have an employee there. So I don't need to clothe anyone.
I see. Okay, so that used to have an employee there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it. What about the, is that also for the communications?
Yes, sir. Because we're not, we don't need a pager or any of that.
Okay. All right, so the visitation treatment we talked about. So you're not asking for the pavement maintenance seminars, which is on page 113. Page 116, I guess this has happened, just something has moved around. The grounds improvements, vegetation supplies, walkway maintenance supplies, that's someplace else?
Yes, we've shuffled them around to another department, sir.
Okay, all right. So one of the things that I discovered is that it's, when you say Parks Maintenance, that doesn't include the community park because it's someplace else. And I'm wondering what the, why that decision was made.
So things generally, sir, things that grow are under turf and landscape and things that are structures generally are under Parks Maintenance. So Parks Maintenance is really Parks Facilities Maintenance with facilities being everything except for those things that grow.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Got it?
And what was that definition again? Things that grow?
So things that grow generally fall under turf and landscape, which is Department 4005. And things that are Parks and Recreation Facilities such, that are structures are what are maintained by 4004, Parks Maintenance.
Kind of says it on program description.
Yeah, and that's one of those other ones that many years ago, maybe as many as eight years ago, the facilities maintenance was under the Parks and Recreation Department. And then the decision was made to put that under Parks and Rec Department because it's just a little more elegant to have all of the maintenance workers working for the same person to kind of give us some continuity of supervision and also some ability to provide service back and forth across each other. And we may just not have given it the most elegant name to help you understand that distinction.
Okay. So then a lot of the things that are in the turf and landscape are obviously things that are for recreation facilities. So we're going to be looking at that when we get to the Recreation Department as well.
So within the turf and landscape departments, for all the things that are in there in the 4005, all we're maintaining in this department is the grass around it. So the growing things around it. So you see the pump stations and such that are in there? We just go out there and knock down the grass. That's all this person does.
So in the Parks and Facility Operations Budget, which you'll see next week, you'll see things like the water that's needed for the different parks, yes?
So those are the kind of things that, you know, it's really helpful to, because Public Works is really doing it for somebody else, so to speak, I mean, another department.
Yes, sir. We're service provider, absolutely.
And so making it clear, you know, how much is something that really is unique to Public Works, like maintaining the streets is just something that Public Works does. But when you get into maintaining parks, that's for somebody else, in fact. So when we get to the water and sewer, then we'll need to have a clear sense of what those enterprise funds are in total together. It would be helpful to have that, as I said before, integrated. The page 127, Utilities, Cost of Street Light, Electricity and Water.
Yes, sir.
So that's under...
Sierra Point.
It's under Sierra Point.
So that's covered by the Landscape and Lighting District?
Yes, it is. It's covered by that enterprise fund, yes, sir.
Right, okay. So why are we, why do we have the, or what's the reason for the GBMID being separated out the way that it is?
This is an issue that was brought up a number of years ago when we were looking at the utility fund. There is actually some property tax that the GBMID receives and it provides service to a very specialized area of the city. So in order to continue to receive that property tax, it was best determined to keep it as a separate department.
And there's also a, an underlying handwritten agreement, which I believe dates back to 1898 when Crocker Trust provided an easement for SFPUC through that property. It's one of the turnouts that we receive very low water at in perpetuity. So there's been some conversation as to if we were to break GBMID or to absorb GBMID that...
We'd lose that contractual deal?
So rather than losing that, it's a good deal, sir.
Okay. Right. That's kind of what I understood too.
300,000 gallons a day at 15 cents a unit?
You know what, sir? I've got to go back and look at them because we have two of them and they both have completely different, I don't know how they came up with their, with their metric for how they decided to do it, but...
No, I, see, check and see if I'm right. It's 300 gallons a day for GBMID and 100,000 city of visitation per day.
He's right.
15 cents a unit.
Stu is saying you're right, sir. That's a really scary memory over that item, sir.
Okay. We went over this stuff.
Yeah, no. I remember that. Former city engineer was the one who discovered that agreement and filed someplace.
Carol?
Down in County.
Is that right?
Yeah, Jim Thompson, yeah.
Yeah, it was Jim Thompson.
It was Thompson, really? Okay, wow. That's great.
Question on 134. Emergency Generator Permit Fee under, it's called memberships, but it's Emergency Generator Permit Fee?
It's every other year. We have to renew it.
So it's every other year, so that's why it's zero?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay.
So it'll come back next year.
What's the conservation program on page 135 that's now zero?
Oh, that's, that's where we belong to the Barrier Water Supply Conservation Agency and we always put X amount of money in there. You're primarily, what we do is we help fund ultra-low flow toilets and the purchase of, it's rebates for them. So I think we're doing $75 rebates now.
So we're not doing that?
No, we do. It got moved.
Zero in the, it got moved someplace else?
It's, it's over in Membership, sir. It's under 52233. It's on the previous page, 134. One, two, three, four down?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So it went from 4,200 to 6,000?
Yes.
Okay.
We've gotten more. And we've done that intentionally, particularly with the utility funds, what we try and do. We're trying to clean up 52241, the Department Special Expense, because that's where we put the completely unknown items, which means waterline breaks. And so it gives me an account to put that sort of item into so I can get a feel for, I can really track where we're going. And if we're starting to have entirely too many breaks, it indicates we need to pick up a CIP program somewhere. It's like, for instance, the fire that happened this weekend. I put that into the EOC Department in Special Department Expense, 52241. That's where we capture our costs in there. So we're really trying to make it special expenses as opposed to just using it as an everyday account number.
And that's easier to be reimbursed, too.
Well, it's, exactly. It just keeps the paperwork. It keeps that chain. It's easier to track. I don't have to, I don't have to hand file it somewhere. I can keep it in our computer system in that fashion.
So you implied this earlier, but the GBMID encompasses also the Northeast Ridge?
It absolutely does, yes, sir. Crocker Park and Northeast Ridge.
Okay. But they have an assessment district of a sort up there as well. What does that cover? Don't they?
No, sir. There was originally, well, that's for the HCP?
No, no, no. The Northeast Ridge has a, covers...
Covers the bond.
Well, yeah, which was the sewer lines and water lines and things of that nature in streets. It's the infrastructure.
And who's that money paid to? Us? Stuart knows this. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what it is, is it covered the infrastructure that was put into, into the project back when the project was originally built, as Clay said, the sewer line, the storm drains. We, there is an assessment every year. The assessment that's being charged pays for the bond that was sold to put those in. And it's tracked in Fund 795.
Okay, so it's the equivalent of something like a Melrose.
It's the equivalent of that.
To a Melrose, right.
But it's a...
795 is...
It's the fund that you would see that charge to.
Okay.
So if you look at, if you look at the beginning of the book and you look at the different funds, you'd have Fund 795. And that would be, that would be what we collect and what we pay for, for that bond. And then the bond is shown in the debt service.
But not in any of the utility departments.
Right, because it's a, it's a debt service. It's not a ongoing maintenance cost that it's paying for.
Okay. Northeast Ridge Assessment District Debt Service Fund?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, page 139, what are we doing about the street sweeping now? Is that what that is?
Yes, sir. No, we did move it. We're paying it out of two separate funds. We're paying it out of Niptes and there's one other area. I'm sorry, I can't remember the second one right now. But we're getting Measure M money and there's another pass-through that we get from City and County Association of Governments. So we moved it over to another fund. We still do the street sweeping, but we just pay for it out of a different department.
Okay. Because there are two street sweeping and both of them were down to zero?
Yes, sir. We zeroed them out.
Okay.
But we, but we moved them. We did move them.
Or NPDES or what? Where is it?
That is where one of them is, yeah. Well, no, it's not.
The one under NPDES is zero according to what I'm looking at.
I mean, over the years, we've cut back certainly on fees.
I, you know what, sir? Can I get back to you on that one?
Okay.
Apparently, I'm not going to be able to find it.
Okay.
Some of our contractors in the past done a really lousy job. What's the point?
It's the joy of dealing with contract labor, sir.
Yeah, I know.
It's...
Yeah, I saw some guys, while Ray's looking, kind of digressable, saw some contractors up there about 6:00 PM today. Guy had a truck parked over here and the other guy's cutting right here and no car can get by and he's got, he's got things on.
The weed whackers.
And blowing weed.
The weed whackers character, really.
Contractors, yeah.
Okay, one, one final question?
Sir?
Page 148, Special Department Expense under Emergency Operations Center. 32,926.
So that's not quite the way I submitted. I think maybe some of my edits didn't get captured in there. Again, we're trying to clean up that Special Department Expense. The way the EOC Department was set up is that the council said, let's put a budget of $50,000 in there. And so that's what we did. So we take a portion out of that to pay for that 20% of a full-time employee and then the rest of it, we just run into different departments. Quite frankly, it's usually paying for, for training here. It's paying for the activities we participate in with Seminole County OES. But I think my edits of where we were going to allocate it out have not been put in there yet. We'll have to get those to you.
Yeah, because it's, you know, last year it was 7,800 and this year it's 32.
Right, but the total remains the same, sir. The total's still 50 grand. So the department total.
It'd just be nice to, you know, break it down a little bit as to what, what's in there. Done. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. You're very welcome.
All right, Terry, you have some questions?
Not at this time.
It's happy?
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right.
No, I'm fine. I would have segued in, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, Randy.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So next is Police Department. All right, Lisa, come on up.
Okay. Help me, Cheryl. How do I get to the...
Hang on one minute and I'll come in.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Before we start, I think we're going to start with the shared services before. Before we start with the police budget and reviewing that, we're going to, I'm going to discuss a little bit about shared services and what the Police Department has done in looking into alternate means of providing police services to the City of Brisbane. police services to the City of Brisbane. So if we can get the PowerPoint.
Hang on one second.
Okay. Just a little background. Back in July of 2011, at the request of the Budget Subcommittee, we contacted the Seminole County Sheriff's Department and asked them to put together a proposal for providing police services to the City of Brisbane. So my brief PowerPoint presentation will touch on two key components, and it'll be staffing and fiscal analysis. I'm going to start with actually what our current Police Department has in regards to staffing. Okay. We'll get there. Okay, there we go. So Brisbane Police Department, our current staffing. We have two officers per shift at all times. That is our minimum staffing levels. During busier times of the day, we have an overlap officer and they generally work anywhere between three in the afternoon and the three in the morning. Or that overlap officer also covers shifts when there are shifts that are open. For example, officers on training, sick, out on injury. We have administration personnel that's available during the day should the administration need to respond to any incident that occurs. We have a sergeant, a qualified supervisor on duty at all times. So out of those two minimum staff, those two officers on duty 24/7, one of them is either a sergeant or a watch commander. The commander supervises patrol services and he's currently, right now, covering patrol services fifty percent of his time. The Chief of Police, myself, I'm in charge of the overall administration of the Police Department. I act as the liaison between local county, state, and federal law enforcement entities. And I'm also currently covering patrol, maybe twenty, thirty percent of the time. So you'll see me out there many times as well. This is our current budget, two million eight hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one. Now, we'll talk a little bit about the Sheriff's Proposal and their staffing levels. Their proposal would provide one officer, we'll refer to them as officers, but they are deputies, on duty during day shift and night shift. So 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, you have one person on and another person comes on 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then they have one, one deputy during midday overlap. So that deputy would come in at work noon to midnight to cover that overlap shift. Just so that you understand, so from midnight to noon, there would only be one deputy in town to provide police services to the City of Brisbane. Cover officers are available from on-duty sheriff deputies assigned to patrol in other areas of the county. So other areas meaning they patrol the areas of Half Moon Bay, Millbrae, San Carlos, and also from their headquarters. So if an additional officer was needed to cover, they would need to respond from those designated patrol areas. They would have no sergeant or qualified supervisor on duty at any time. If a supervisor was needed, again, they would have to reach out to their, their county areas that they currently patrol. The commander position would be eliminated and the Chief of Police position would be reduced to a sheriff captain to oversee the operations of the services. Fiscal analysis. The cost of the Sheriff's Proposal is two million seven hundred eleven thousand seventy-six. This does not include any of our professional service contracts that we currently have. That would include dispatch, our records management system, Narcotics Task Force. So any of the other additional services that are provided from these contracts would not be covered under, in this number. So adding all of those additional contracts, that's an increase in thirteen percent. So their final proposal cost would be three million seventy-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-one. Some of the new developments, the Sheriff's Office, at the time that they provided this proposal, they did agree to absorb all of the police personnel. And that was because they were going to have openings come up at the time, they were having retirements. Well, they currently now have taken over a Millbrae Police Department, as you're aware of. So a lot of those positions have been, have been absorbed already by the transition of taking over Millbrae. So that may not, no longer be feasible in absorbing all the police personnel. So in summary, the proposal is formulated based on staffing levels that are well below what we currently consider to be acceptable. The proposal would not provide any cost savings to the city. And the proposal would eliminate the possibility of creating further budget reductions through salary and benefit savings or staffing reductions. And in conclusion, having our own Police Department has become an even more cost-effective solution. We can continue to provide a higher quality of police services with more staff coverage at a hundred and ninety-one thousand less than currently the Sheriff's offer. This is just a graph that shows the difference between what we currently provide and what the Sheriff's Proposal would provide. And again, it's the hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars difference. And this just kind of is a graph that shows currently what Brisbane's patrols on a daily basis would be and the Sheriff's. So basically what I kind of explained about having, you know, having that overlap, so there would be twelve hours within every day that wouldn't be, that would be covered only by one deputy in town. And so just so you get a little feel for, for how our staffing is, we currently, we're, we're at seventeen officers and we are currently now down to eleven. So we have four shifts, two day shifts, two night shifts, two different teams. So you figure four shifts at two officers or eight officers. We do have then one officer who's the overlap and that officer that I mentioned that kind of works some of the in-between hours or, or basically at this time covers a lot of the open shifts. That officer works two days on one team and two days on the other team. So he kind of is a backup or a relief for either of the two teams. But currently, for example, when you have an officer, we have an officer out on paternity leave, or if you have an officer on injury, or you have officers in court during, during court proceedings, that overlap officer no longer is an overlap. He then fills those open shifts. And then that's when the commander comes in and fills any illnesses, any trainings. And then, again, when you have additional officers out, then that's when I also fill in to help assist when officers are going back and forth to court and different details that they're, that they're assigned to. And that is the shared services. I know that we also threw out there an idea of sharing a supervisor with either Colma or Daly City, and I'll bring, I'll bring that up and discuss that a little further in the budget cut scenarios in my budget presentation. Any questions from council regarding the shared services presentation?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, just, uh-
Self-evident.
More of a comment. I mean, it would just totally undo that community-oriented policing thing that you've developed all these years. And it would just be a crying shame because to get one officer from the Sheriff's Department, we're going back to the forties, you know, in the fifties, you know, when Brisbane was unincorporated and it just, I don't-
Also, keep it in mind, I know that San Carlos currently, for their first year contract, had fifty percent, they kept fifty percent of their officers to still work in San Carlos. And then after the two-year contract expired, which is recently, not only did their chief go out and work and go be, he was transferred into the jail. So they brought in a different bureau chief or captain, but also those officers now have been absorbed in the jail. So you're having, when you're filling the shifts, they're filling in, they're being filled by deputies. And deputies, it could be different deputies every day. It's not your, you know-
Right, they don't know the community.
Correct.
They don't get to know people and, you know, I mean, the nuances of a small community like Brisbane. That, Chief, I just got a question is, because it seems to me like you're at your critical mass threshold right now as far as people. Is that, is that an accurate statement? I mean, I'm talking about, you know, to really function as a Police Department, you know, safely.
Yes, we are. And, and as you can see with that overlap officer, it gives us some relief. But again, on a general shift, on a general day, you have either officers taking vacation, you have trainings, you have, you know, the biggest thing sometimes is the court. Because we eliminated our detective division, and that included one detective and one school resource officer. So when you eliminated the detective division, a lot of the cases that are being taken by the patrol officers get referred to investigations. That detective then does all the follow-up and continues on with the case. So when the case does go to trial, that detective goes to trial as the investigating officer. Well, now since we've eliminated that investigations division, then officers are doing the full investigations. So not only are they spending more time having to, you know, be on the phone and doing all the follow-up and, and to complete their investigation, but when it finally does go to trial, officers can be in court for up to a week or more, depending on how long the trial goes, if it goes to a jury trial. So those shifts have to be filled, they, they get pulled off of patrol and they do have to be filled either by the cover officer, the commander, or myself. So we are making it work. But yes, we're at the point where we just can't lose any more, any more bodies.
Do we still get the cops grant?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, and that really is basically one person, right?
That's a hundred, a hundred, I think it used to be a hundred and fifty thousand, if I'm not mistaken, Stuart, but I think that's dropped down to a hundred thousand.
Yeah. So not quite a full officer then?
Right.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. You have another part of your presentation?
Yes. The next would be the police budget. Let's, we'll start with that. There, the police budget is comprised of the administration, communications, and records, and patrol. You'll see the revenue generated comes from parking and traffic enforcement citations as well as vehicle tow, private abatement, vehicle tow, and our vehicle abatement program. And there you have it broken down. Most of, again, most of the budget falls within the salaries, benefits, and insurances, and fourteen percent under services and supplies, which makes up our total of the two million eight hundred eighty-one thousand seven twenty-one. We'll start with budget for the administration. Under administration falls myself and the executive administrative assistant. And, and then, again, most of that's covered through salaries and then services and supplies is less than, than one percent. Items for council discussion are the awards, plaques, and flowers. I mean, it's generally, you know, we have different ways now that we've been kind of dealing with that. Generally, if plaques or flowers are needed, we, we tend to, you back with the POA, the Police Officer Association, contribute to that and make one donation versus having to have a separate, a separate line item. So that could be, there's really no need for, for that area. Travel and training, that's usually myself and the executive, administrative executive assistant. One of the trainings that I think is most important, that, that is needed to continue to attend is the Seminole County Police Chiefs and Sheriff Retreat that is once a year. And that's important because it really focuses on the issues within our own county, that what the Police Departments are dealing with. And, you know, we look, we look to address some of the concerns that are brought up. And it's also a way to just kind of, you know, get on track on what the future plans are for the, for the following year, whether it be issues that we're dealing with gangs or in some areas of the county, or personnel issues that arise. So that's an important training. So, and the other one is the California Police Chiefs and Association. That's only once a year, but I can alternate that every other year. And that's also important just for updates that, that come up. And it's nice to network with other agencies, there are small agencies as well, to kind of listen to what the issues that, that come up within their own departments. So I can bring that down easily to twenty-two hundred dollars.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
The retreat that, for the local?
Yes.
Do they stay local or they go totally away so they can concentrate on the issues?
They, they go away. They go away to Carmel Valley and it's really an isolated location. So dinner is, breakfast, lunch, and dinner is all served there and we all tend to just socialize there and stay together. So it's a two-night, it used to be twice a year, this retreat, and they've actually cut it back to once a year.
Thank you.
What's a one-hundred club?
The one-hundred club provides funds for, it's, it's through the chiefs, actually, anybody can, can participate in it. But what your contribution is, it's a way to provide scholarships, not only to the families of police officers that have, that have died in the line of duty, but also to anyone who wants to further their education within law enforcement. They can't afford the tuition costs. So that provides assistance for scholarships as well.
The thing that I, I really don't think it's, it's the right thing to do. If Sheriff takes over, our Police Chief would no longer be called Police Chief? I mean, that's-
It would be, it would, they would bring it down to a captain's position.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like me to move on to the next?
Is twenty-two hundred going to do it?
I think that would be sufficient. The next one comes communication and records. The salaries for that is our records clerk and there's only one, one individual in our records division. As you see, most of it is in services and supplies. And the big chunk of that actually is for our police dispatch through Seminole Police Department, which is about a hundred and sixty thousand. Travel and training for our records clerk is an annual training that she goes to, the California Law Enforcement Supervisor's Records Training. And that's important for her to attend. She can attend that every other year, but it does touch on state, changes in state mandates as well as any changes in law and legislation that involves the Release of Records Information Act. So that's important for her to stay on top of that.
Who's that?
Jeanette Maltonato.
And where do they go, that one year, one-time conference?
They alternate. So it's either Southern California or here locally. So she can attend when it's here locally every other year.
Thank you.
Do you want to keep, how much you want for-
We can change that to eleven fifty.
Okay.
And then the next one is the patrol, patrol services. And again, you'll see most of that is salary, with the services and supplies being nine percent. And those kinds of, those are falls under the contracts that include the Keller Center, the Narcotics Task Force contract, the Northern Peninsula Family Alternatives. And you can find those under the actual patrol budget, under the professional services of 52235. I'm sorry, that's Communications. But yes, under professional services. Yeah, it is 52235. And travel and training for patrol. Just to give you a little background, all law enforcement are required by the state to provide twenty-four, to receive twenty-four hours of continuous professional training. And that's every two years. But that is also reimbursed. So although we budget for this travel and training, eighty percent of that gets reimbursed by the state. So only twenty percent of that really, we use for non-reimbursable trainings. And that would be things that, Homeland Security training, things that are, are other federal type of training. And also under that, training is our Community Service Officer who receives, every year she has to be recertified in installation of car seats that she does, that she provides that service to the community. So that certification falls under the training. So, I mean, reality is although we, we get eighty percent of that back, so only about twenty percent of that we would really need to budget for.
So what do you suggest?
Pardon?
What do you suggest?
We can keep that at maybe four thousand?
Maybe what we can do is, is budget for the eleven thousand, but then budget for eight thousand in revenues, which would be the eighty-
Yes.
Right around that eighty percent number. Traditionally, what we do is to be on the conservative side, is we budget the expenses. And then if we get the revenues in, we, you know, it comes in as a new revenue to us, not that, not budgeted revenue. The reason I do that is I just never trust the state until I see a penny in my pocket. I, I don't know what, I don't know why I have that attitude with the state.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
So, so normally what we've done in the past is we budget the expense and then we get the revenue, it would just be, you know, unanticipated revenue. But what we could do this year is budget the eleven thousand dollars and then budget the revenue, the eighty-eight hundred dollars for the revenue and assume that the state's going to continue to keep their word on post-reimbursements.
We don't have a dog anymore?
No, we don't. When Sergeant Jackson retired, she had actually retired the dog earlier because he had some medical, medical conditions. And then our current dog, Uron, with Officer Borg, recently had to be put down. He had to retire early as well due to hip, you know, something about the shepherds have, yeah, some hip issues. And he actually had more of a neurological, neurali, issue where he was paralyzed from the neck down. So they had to make some, make some really tough decisions. And that happened from one day to the next. He woke up the next morning and, and just couldn't move. They took him into emergency and they couldn't determine what caused, it was just like this pinched nerve and, and the next thing you know, he was paralyzed. So they had to make, make a really tough decision.
Sorry to hear that. I didn't realize that. What about, I mean, what's the importance of having the, I mean, because sometimes that's like having a-
It really is. It's having like another, another patrol officer on the street because it's amazing how responding to a call, having, you know, especially when you're, you're down officers, you have the dog there. And it, it does really make an impact on, you know, on any incident that you, that you go to. But it's just more right now, you know, the, just the cost of, I know Purcell Murray and Arthur Court in the past have donated, caught the money for the dogs as well as the training. So I know that right now they've been, I've talked to Larry Purcell, you know, briefly, and he says as things get better, he'd be more than willing to always, you know, step up and provide another, the cost for a dog. But like anything, everybody's filling the budget. You know, the, the economy is, is very difficult. So, right now-
So does this figure from the previous year, take into account that kind of private subsidy?
Yes.
Okay, so what would the total cost be then?
For the training?
Well, I mean, in order to have-
Right. The subsidy from Purcell Murray and Arthur Court in the past has been for the initial purchase of the-
Right.
Of the dog-
Right.
As well as the initial training. This is the ongoing cost that the department has for, for having the dog. And what also is not included in this budget because we don't have a dog, is the additional cost for the canine handler pay.
Right.
So there, we don't get any additional money on an ongoing basis from anybody. So the forty-five hundred dollars for the canine training and the thirty-four hundred is the annual cost for that.
Right. So what is, how much does a dog cost? I mean, just-
It's like five to ten thousand, isn't it?
Yeah. And then the trainings and other, the training and the time, it's a month-long training and then the officer's time as well, can get quite expensive.
So the dogs don't already have some kind of training in regards to that?
No.
They're getting a, like a pup?
No, generally they, the handler will, will go and when the dogs come forward through Whitmer, Whitmer Tyson has usually been the provider for the dogs who, and the officer would go and, and they, they kind of have to find the right fit. And they've kind of see what dogs are available. If they get a right fit, then they go off, they take some time to bond with the dog before they go away to a month-long training of understanding the commands and really just bonding with the dog and starting to learn the, you know, just the whole, the whole aspect of, of, you know, responding to, you know, car stops, all the whole law enforcement process is what the training is for. And that's- And that's continuous. Right? And that's continuous. They, not only, after that month-long, they come back and they're still going to training at least twice a month, just to continue that.
Are, are all the dogs that would be used for the canine unit, are they all German shepherds?
No, not all. Some agencies have different dogs. South City I know has a Malamute and also a Rottweiler, so, yeah.
Some have Beagles.
Hipper dogs.
Another bomb dog, yeah.
Have that hip dysplasia, you know, situation. A lot of those, those dogs aren't lasting very long.
Although we've gotten good use out of all of our dogs, I think we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just a genetic hip issue with the shepherd, shepherd dog, that's a well-known fact, you know.
Rottweilers too.
Yeah.
Same problem.
I have a question on crossing guard. I know that's one of the questions that we need to talk about.
Yes.
That's something that, particularly with this budget turn, cities are definitely trying to put it back at the...
At the schools.
School or get volunteers and so forth. So I think...
I think that ever since I've been here, I know that, that we've always, it's always fallen within the police budget.
Right.
And generally currently, or generally what, it's three hours a day. They, so it's 30 hours bi-weekly. And they cross in the morning during the drop-off and then the noon time during the kindergarten as the, the smaller kids get released from school. And then the afternoon when all the rest of the school gets released. So that's one crossing guard at BES. And it's always fallen within the police budget, so it is up for council discussion. There are some, like you mentioned, Councilmember Richardson, about putting onto the schools and, and seeing if they would be able to find parent volunteers who would be interested in providing that service. We would still graciously provide the training, whatever training was needed, and we would host, generally what we do is we meet with the crossing guard periodically to address any concerns that he has that come through, that come up. But sometimes the school, by putting it to the school, could provide, they can provide stricter sanctions to, you know, some of the violators more than we could. So it's, again, it's council's discussion on whether you would like us to continue to fund that or look at some alternative means.
Particularly, particularly...
I'd prefer to keep it in there.
Yeah, particularly the community voted to pass a measure. So there, there is a new parcel tax that passed and this could be something that they might be able to look at that. I think we need to approach it and see what happens. That's something that can be done.
I think it needs to be vetted out. I, I'd prefer to keep it in there for right now, just, just for safety reasons, you know, and, and...
If the school district pays for it, the school's safety would not be there?
You think that they're not, they're in worse shape than we are?
They just passed a parcel tax, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's just to stay level, not that...
No, I don't agree.
You know, how about this, Clark? And we're gonna have our, our two-by-two meeting. I think there's something that we could bring up in regards to, I, I think having parents volunteer and, and doing something where, you know, like, like Chief has said, they can get the training. And it could be something that, I don't know if, if there's some kind of reward thing that parents have to do, you know, certain amount of time they need to, to participate in regards to, you know, just, just giving their, their, their energy to this, to the school, to the school district.
I'll have to say that when I was a kid...
We used to do it.
We used to do it. We were the school crossing guard.
I was one.
The older kids were the kids who were the crossing guards.
Sixth graders did it, yeah.
Did it for the little kids.
I don't know why, why we have to have, why we're paying $3,500, but that's what we used to do.
Okay, well, I would, I would say then leave it in there and then have the discussion with...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. See where, see where they're at. But just on the side of safety, I wouldn't just cut it because we're talking, we're talking July 1st and, you know, we'd have to have some kind of transition thing. And school's gonna be out this week on Thursday, so it's, you know...
This is the time to talk about it because...
Sure.
The schools start in August.
Right.
So actually, this is a good time to talk about it.
Well, I...
I do realize that you're concerned about safety, which all of us are. And I'm not saying not to have the service, I'm just saying again, let's find way that we can prove, the service can be provided, not by spending $8,000, almost $8,000. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you know, not have, it's not that. There are ways to do this at a lot lower cost.
Well, and, and what I'm saying though is, is everybody's going away for the summer or at least your school administrator for a good portion of it. Also, I'm, you know, yeah, certainly have the discussion, but it, by the same token, is we need a transition plan if we do it.
We just need to be very serious about our deficit, that's all there is to it. If there is money, I have no objection about, you know, your desire to continue this item. At the same time, we definitely need to look to see what we're doing, not just continue doing the way we've been doing business, that's all I'm saying.
Lisa, this position, is it during the summer that no money is going, going to this person?
Correct. It's just hourly, correct.
It's hourly?
So even during holidays or during the winter break, they only get paid when they work.
What is the hourly rate this individual gets paid? What is the hourly rate?
I'm not sure, Stuart, I'll defer to Stuart and see if he knows.
Of course, I don't have it in the budget this year. I'd have to look because I just don't remember what that is off the top of my head.
Okay, that would be an interesting question to know the answer, how much per hour we pay. And is that different than the security person that we have at the marina? Are they, are they pretty much the same hourly way, salary? Or why can't that security person to, to do the same if that is less than this, the hourly rate?
I mean, there's, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, they're serving at different times of the day. So, I mean, we can look into that.
If the person is willing to have additional hours and additional time, could that be accommodated?
Right. I, I just don't know which one is paid which.
Sure. That's, I, it would be interesting to know.
$15 bucks.
About $15, yeah.
Thank you.
$15 an hour.
You know, we're gonna have that meeting, we can, we can discuss.
Yes.
And, and like the chief said, this is paid by the hour and school's out in a little bit and so, it isn't like, you know, the 18th when we do adopt the, the budget, that we're gonna stop doing our, our budget research, we still have more things to do, so. All right, Lisa, continue please.
The next would be the budget summary. And again, this would, a little discussion to the reduction scenarios, the 10%, 20%, 30% and 40. And I don't think I included a slide for 40%. I just, so we'll start with the 10% reduction scenario. I would need to reduce two staff positions. It would impact financial support and admin support and record-keeping of personnel files. Some of the impacts for patrol operations would be supervision support if we were to eliminate a position. It would increase overtime budget. Management personnel would be required to work patrol to cover ships and we're currently doing that already. But again, that would, if we reduced two staff in order to get to that, that number. Or, as we had mentioned or had been thrown out there once before about sharing a night shift supervisor with a neighboring agency. And we had two things that we looked at. We looked at Coma only because their level of activity was similar to, to our level of activity. But the geographics across the hill, some of the hurdles that we've, that we've, you know, come across or the radio frequency issues, they are dispatched by a different entity and then some, they're on a different records management system. The question, how we were looking at it, just so you had an idea, is that if we had to, if we eliminated a body then, or a supervisor, a body, we would have one team, one, one, we work in four, four-day period. So we would have one officer and Coma would have one officer and one supervisor, one sergeant. So that sergeant, if needed over in Brisbane, would respond to cover over the hill. And, and then on, on the opposite team, we would have the sergeant on our end and they would have one officer. And if they needed a sergeant, then our sergeant would respond to their city. Again, it still leaves one person in town at a period of time. So that was one of the, the alternatives we looked at. We're not really sure, you know, there may be a cost issue involved only because we have the radio issues and, and records management issues and just the, the geographics of the way the city is. So we also thought about Daly City. And Daly City has one officer working, their district one, which covers the Bay Shore, Geneva area. And so the, the idea would be, would we be able to, you know, pull from them and have them cover if we had one body in Brisbane? But I think their calls for service are obviously are much higher in volume and we already tend to find ourselves going over to assist them to cover. So I think if anything, that would, may not be beneficial to us, only because I think we would be spending more time in their city, working their, their area and leaving nobody in town. So, you know, again, it's just, that would be something we would have to look more into should the worst-case scenario happen. And we would have to eliminate a position or two.
Doesn't even seem like you need to go into the other ones because...
Yeah, I mean...
10% is already perhaps not even something that we...
And 20% would just, we wouldn't be able to provide 24-hour patrol coverage.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions from council?
I have a couple of minor questions.
Great.
I'll try to be quick. I'll go backwards.
It's 11:33.
Yeah, I know. Quick. Patrol vehicle, emergency equipment, down to zero.
Yes, what we decided to do is we would alternate every other year. So we just made a purchase, so we would not need to have a purchase this, in this fiscal year.
Okay, so what about the equipment?
That equipment would, falls under the light bar and the radio that would go into the vehicle. So since we're not purchasing a vehicle, we wouldn't have to provide that equipment.
Okay, got it. Page 92, the professional services under communications. Is it, do we use the county or do we actually use the city of San Mateo?
We use the city of San Mateo.
We do use the city of San Mateo.
Yes, we do.
Why, why did we switch from the county to the city of San Mateo?
You know, I wasn't part of that transition, but I know currently we, we did a preliminary, I think the city managers did a preliminary cost analysis and I think we were, it would be more, I think probably because San Mateo was offering us a, a better rate. And even currently today, it's still a better rate than, than going to, to the sheriff's office, to the county.
I think Clay has an answer on that.
Yeah, at the time, we actually were in discussions with both the county and, and the city of San Mateo jumped in and had an interest in providing the service and they provided it cheaper and they had more modern communications equipment. So it just worked out better for us.
Are there options with perhaps other cities?
You know what? This is one of those, these areas we need to be very careful with because I've been involved in the countywide discussions and there's various models have been put together and looked at with various cities and through the county and stuff. And we pay more in every model. So we're, we're, I've been kind of keeping quiet and keeping low on this issue because we're, we're doing very well in terms of this agreement with the...
We're paying less.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Right.
And I think one of the advantages also is San Mateo still is on the same records management system that we, that we are. So that would be in, through high-tech.
Adable.
Right. If we were to go to another one, a lot of them are, are switching over to RIMS and that would be a big cost for us to do that transition.
Gotcha.
So it, it's a win-win.
Sure.
Okay. And just one other thing. On page 85, you list the personnel. And I'm, somehow I'm missing something. I don't see the commander position.
The, oh, yes, 85. Yes, because it's an, actually an acting commander position, so he is, still falls under the sergeants, which is the three.
Okay.
Because he's just in an acting position.
So he's an acting commander?
That's correct.
So is there any intent of changing that? And if so, would that have budgetary implications?
We would like to eventually make that a permanent position, but we under, he, and he understands, we understand the, the, this economic situation the city's in, so that may be something we look at in the future.
Although I would say is that, you know, I've told you before that there are a number of positions we have to look at in terms of doing kind of a reorganization of the organizational chart. This is clearly one of them.
Right.
And there are limitations in terms of our personnel rules, in terms of how long you can work somebody in an acting position.
That's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, so, and I think, I think in fairness to the employee and just to, you know, be upfront in terms of what our real long-term costs are, I think this is something we need to address during the year. I, I appreciate the chief and the acting commander's cooperation and willingness to kind of work with an uncertain situation for the period of time they have. But I think this upcoming fiscal year, we're gonna need to address this and, and make it permanent.
Yeah, you know, you know, I appreciate the police force, you know, being able to deal with the, a smaller staff and, and, you know, covering, covering for each other. But in this situation, or, or in some ways are we providing opportunity for officers that maybe it might take longer to get advancement in other departments? Because having to take on additional duties and, you know, have, being in acting positions...
So, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure in the question you're asking.
So, you know, like with the, you know, with this, this other position, so it's, it's an acting position, but has the reduction in your, in your staff, has that then helped the folks that are there today, has that provided them with, with opportunity to move up?
Yes. Actually, what we've done is because we are down to two sergeants, which we generally have one on each shift, we've given the opportunity to do an acting, watch commander, acting sergeant position for those that were interested. So we actually asked them to apply as part of also succession planning for the future is to have them, they put, they submitted an application to myself in, in regards to their interest in becoming future supervisors. So what we currently have is we have a rotating six months. So we put those that were interested and then meet the qualifications, we put them through a, a acting sergeant, watch commander, training. And then we allow them to do that for six months. So we give them also some collateral assignments so that they get there a little bit more familiar with, you know, some of the responsibilities of a supervisor.
Yeah.
As well as, you know, prepare them for future advancement.
And just kind of thinking about what you were talking about, you know, with morale and, and, you know, here, I mean, okay, yeah, you're short-staffed, but maybe perhaps, you know, here's an opportunity for you to, to put on your resume and, and, you know, not everyone stays in the same place all the time and...
And that's exactly why we did that.
Yeah.
We, you know, we realized it's important to keep positive morale, you know, so that we don't lose officers. And I think the officers have been wonderful. I mean, they're, you know, they, they enjoy being here, they, you know, their overtime shifts that are coming up, there's no gripes, there's no complaints, you know? But we also make sure that we, we watch out for them also. When there are important events in their, in their personal life, we want to make sure that they have a good balance because a good balance at home is important to have, that good balance between your home and your personal life.
Yeah.
And so when, you know...
Can't be all work and no play.
Absolutely. So when certain things come up, anniversaries or things that we realize they need to spend some time with their family, then that's when, you know, Commander Meiser and myself, we, we put, we all pony up to make it happen. And, and so I think that, you know, we're very, the officers that are here are very happy to be here and they've, you know, there's been no complaints. So I think that, you know, it's, it's been good so far. I know we were struggling with the staffing issues, but we hope that's a, a temporary, a temporary.
Yeah, sure. They all do.
You know.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
It's interesting, I, I definitely, I'm one of those people that says, okay, let's look at what we can do. Maybe we can provide the same excellent service that people have provided in another way. At the same time, when I read, studying doesn't mean that is good for our community. I'm definitely, I look at it that way, not just because we're studying it, it's going to give us a couple of hundred bucks, make it a hundred, couple of bucks cheaper, let's go to something else. That's not where I am. Some of the things that I read about the possible changes, it's really a red flag for me. It's just, some of it is really a red flag. You don't fool around with your police and fire, it's the safety of a community. But, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions from council?
Very good.
Great, thank you very much.
Staff report, city manager's report on upcoming activities.
No report.
Okay, good. Subcommittee report.
I think we have one. That we probably should disseminate to the council. Economic Development Subcommittee met with, along with Clay, we met with the representatives of UPC, Jonathan Scharfman and Willie Brown and we conveyed the message that we feel that the community doesn't have or feel that UPC's invested in the community and that they have an absentee landowner and that to our economic survival, it's really imperative that the recology project happens and so we conveyed this message that the five of us sitting there at the table aren't going to solve anything and that this message needs to be conveyed to the chairman and the board. And they really, really heard us and took it into consideration and it turns out that they're going to try and set up a meeting that would take place in Vancouver, Canada because, is he the chairman of the board or...
Not anymore.
Not anymore, but...
He has a lot of influence.
Not allowed into the United States, but yeah, he has a lot of influence over the board, but, you know, it's to basically convey the message that recology needs to happen, they need to sell their property to recology so this project keeps moving forward and doesn't get stopped by them and we need to see something from them, you know, to kind of make all this stuff work and that's imperative. And so I think it was actually a very good meeting, so is there anything else to add to that? Shouldn't be without.
No, I think that captures it.
That captures it well, I think that the timeframe of that would be that it would happen probably sometime in the next couple of months and that, you know, that we would have to travel up there for a day, I guess. And then there was also going to try to be a meeting with the chairman that's...
Current chair.
Current one.
Then who?
Then who, who's here in California, so, but that would be probably in San Francisco sometime, either later this month or next month.
So why is the chairperson, chairman cannot come to the United States and has to go to Canada, what's going on with him?
It's something, something to do with the State Department, you know, I don't really...
Yeah, he doesn't have a visa to get into the United States.
Yeah, I think it's more to do with his relationship with the Chinese officials rather than something that's with the United States. So they are the ones that issue the visas to travel, so they're restricting his travel to the United States. So Canada apparently is an option.
So Willie Brown and Scharfman are going to meet with him up there in Canada?
I don't know about that.
Well, yeah, I guess the intention was, is that we went up there and met with them along with the president of, or the CEO of Recology.
Wow, who would pay for that trip?
Well...
Isn't that that expensive, the trip?
It's a question to ask, I mean, you can't just sit here and say, this is out of the area and you talk about it.
No, it would be a, it would be a trip, it'd be a flight up to Vancouver and back, that's it. You're not going to spend the night, you're just going to go up there and have the meeting, but we need to be able to talk with this person.
So one of you then could be considered going, because two of you doesn't have to be...
I think, you know, I mean...
You want to have two.
I'm not sure this is the thing you want to penny pinch on. We had the meeting with the UPC people and I think the Economic Development Subcommittee has been working with them. I think the presence of two council members at a meeting such as this is important.
I disagree, I don't think two would be needed. Clay, I know you're doing the best job on this, but I don't think two needed. One can relay the message.
Well, you know, it isn't about a message, it's about, you know, there's a question that you want to ask.
Whatever you want to say, I don't think it's a good, that's Canada, it's not in America, it's two, at a time that we're talking about people cutting their budget and so forth and you're talking about here, economic development out of the state. I would have reservation for that, I'm not, this is not the time for it, but...
You know, I think it would probably be helpful to understand what the costs are and then just bring that back to the council.
Sure.
And then we're not speculating.
It's something that we just want to bring up, there's not a decision made on this at this point and we can have that discussion a little bit later down the road.
Yeah, yeah, no, not at a quarter to twelve.
Right.
Okay. All right, so next up is, so considering setting June eighteenth at seven PM for the Open Space and Ecology Committee interviews?
I'd prefer not to, I'm having surgery that day and if you want to do it, then it's going to be without me.
Okay, then we'll postpone it and we'll talk about it the next meeting. And then, so we have, we're meeting on the eleventh?
Right.
And then one other potential budget meeting?
I think the eleventh is the only, yeah, it's the only one we have scheduled unless there's a desire to, you know, unless we want to get back together to discuss any additional issues.
We also had the thirteenth on the tentative schedule, so...
Yeah, but I think at this point, we didn't have a subject matter for that night, but we got that reserved in case we want to come back and go through any of the items.
Can you and I talk about...
Sure.
Okay, and then bring it back, okay. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
All right, so, all those favor?
All right.
All right. So, I'm sorry, we aren't the eleventh, it's eighteen.
The eleventh.
Not the eighteenth.
Eighteenth is a regular meeting.
Not to have the interview.
But no interviews, I guess.
I see them, you know, usually on a daily basis, but I don't...
Thirteenth is a possibility if we don't.